Ready?
All right, good morning and welcome to Ventura County Board of Supervisors meeting. And welcome to your boardroom. And today is April 13th. We'll start with our roll call.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Foy?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here. Thank you. And now I'd like to invite up Daniela Ramirez, Executive Director of Linderas Campasinas. And she's going to offer our moment of inspiration. Linderas Campasinas, Inc. represents a culmination of decades of work by farmworking women. Farmworker women have been leaders of many grassroots and mobilizing efforts to improve the lives of farmworker communities. And she's the new Executive Director. Replaced the founding Executive Director, Millie Trevino Salsito. And Daniela has over 13 years of experience in strategic planning, fundraising, and grant writing, and has been very active in our community for decades and is the... Decade, she's not that old. For years. And she is... Her dad is Oxnard Harbor Commissioner Jesse Ramirez. It's a pleasure to have you in the boardroom this morning. Thank you.
Thank you for having me this morning. Good morning, Chairperson Long.
Would you... Daniela, would you pull the mics together so we can...
Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you a little better. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Chairperson Long and board members. I'm very honored to be addressing you this morning in this moment of inspiration. And I hope my words will be inspirational at 8:30. So just as you mentioned, I was born... I was actually born and raised in Oxnard, California. And I am now the Executive Director of a statewide nonprofit which is Linderas Campasinas. It's a women's farmworker organization and the only one of its kind in the nation. We're also unique in that our board members are made up of farmworker women. So it really is an organization that is by and for farmworker women. And we're addressing issues such as critical health issues that are affecting specifically farmworker women. And also well, health issues and issues in the field like labor conditions, pesticide exposure. We're all over the state. We have... We're committee-based. We have 12 committees all over the state. And we're actually expanding in the Napa, Sonoma, and Stanislas areas just because of the need that there is for women to come together and talk about the issues that are affecting them, that there's this red... There's this network of support for them. We also are... Have been working on prevention of domestic violence issues. And we have a couple of really interesting creative projects that the women have been involved in. And one of them is our Apron Project where women for Domestic Violence Month, they will get together, paint or draw or sew. A lot of them like to sew on aprons messages about living violence-free home... Living in violence-free homes and being in healthy relationships. And then they will then go to health fairs, they will go to public events, presentations, and will exhibit the aprons all over to kind of talk about the issue of... The issue that's really a general issue that affects women of all... In all sectors. And we also have this similar project which is called the Bandana Project. This is similar in that they paint, also draw, paint, or sew a bandana. And the topic there is about sexual harassment or sexual assault in the fields. An issue that's not talked about. And part of this project is bringing... Is being able to dialogue about it, bring it to the public light, and talk about that it really is a problem. And if you notice, you may have already noticed that when women are in the fields, they usually are very covered up. And one of the reasons, yes, is because of protecting themselves from the sun. But another reason is to protect themselves from sexual harassment that could possibly lead to sexual assault. Another way that we bring and talk about these issues is through theater where the women actually talk about kind of the complexities of what they go through as farmworker women. And all of these issues are addressed... Can be addressed in the theater. So they show actually how the conditions in the field, maybe not having water available to them, maybe not having, you know, clean areas to break, for example, or getting... Not getting their paychecks complete. So they show that. And they also show how the supervisors kind of use that as leverage against the women. So that's a way for them to... If they're nice to them, if they, you know, here's the water, I'll give you water, come over here. They isolate the women. And then there is when these incidents have been happening. So that's part of what we show in the theater, really the complexity of all the obstacles that these women are dealing with in the fields. This month is Sexual Harassment is the Bandana Project month. We're going to be doing exhibits. We're doing exhibits all around the state. And we're also going to be doing a vigil. In fact, we'll be doing a vigil here in Ventura to kind of remember the... Remember the struggle and the issues that are going on around this issue. And because we traditionally... We do... We definitely do a vigil around domestic violence, but we really wanted to bring it back to do it around this issue because it's just such an issue that's not talked about. So we also have... We also deal with pesticide issues. We do trainings. All of our women are trained. The committees are trained. They're giving leadership training, but also issue training around these particular issues. And the idea around... About Linderas Campasinas and the way... The reason I... One of the reasons I think that we have been a successful model and project is that the women are empowered so that they are the ones that are becoming the agents of social change. So it's not about me or just our employees, but it's about women being empowered and doing testimonies, being outspoken, and talking to other farmworker women and other people in their communities about the services that there are, how they can get help, and then of course advocating around these issues. So in a nutshell, that is what we're working on. And like I said, we're all over the state and we're really unique because we are farmworker women that are... That make up the board and are really the decision-makers. So we're really trying... My role right now is really also wanting us to really get involved in advocacy. And it looks like we actually got some funding to do what's called a Farmworker Policy Institute where we're actually going to be looking at how... What other things we want to do to better our communities like transportation issues and where the women are able to then build a campaign around that, so.
That's marvelous. Thank you. I'd also offer if you would work through my office with the CEO's office to see whether there's an opportunity for us to help in displaying the Apron Project or the Bandana Project for public awareness of both the projects and the work you do and the outstanding outreach that takes place. So thank you, Daniela. Thank you very much for being here.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a few questions.
Oh, Daniela, questions?
Could you tell me, on average, what percentage of the workers in the field are women versus men? Do you have...
I don't have a statistic right now, but definitely... I mean, I would... I don't know. I don't know what the... If it would be like 50/50, I mean 60/50. Yeah, I'd have to let you know.
Okay.
Get back to you on that.
And thank you. When I think about the difficulty of being a young mother, trying to raise a child, and then add on top of that all of the challenges of spending a day picking in the field, and then all of the other things that go with trying to make sure that child is in, you know, getting off on the right foot academically. What a tremendous challenge. And then when you throw out the other possibilities of pesticide exposure and sexual abuse, we're fortunate to have an organization like you out there. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, too. My office is also available, you know, Daniela, too. If you need any help, you know, we're willing to help you. And we're upstairs on the fourth floor if you... Whatever help we can do to help you. And thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay, we have a speaker request card on this item. Caroldean Williams.
Thank you. I had a squirt of inspiration this morning on the holdovers to the grand jury. Sharon Weiner, Patrick Quinn, Joyce Overbaugh, Jose Albergón, Frank Locker, Henry Kelly, Foreman, James Hogland, Walder Kraus, Louis Cunningham.
Okay. All right. If we would now rise for a pledge of allegiance, and Supervisor Parks, would you lead us, please?
Please join me in the pledge to allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the minutes. Item five, minutes have been presented and let's see.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue the minutes for an additional week or two.
There's a motion and a second to continue. Push your buttons. There we go. There, everybody vote. Okay, thank you. All right, that passes. All right, next up, we'll have our agenda review. Let's see, Madam CEO?
Yes, Chairlong. We have an addendum item, number 37, and that is a resolution proclaiming National Telecommunications Week. Our other three changes really just deal with the agenda itself. On Agenda Page Four, Item 10, there's a revised agenda title, and you have been provided that and it has been uploaded. There is also on Agenda Page Five, Item 22, we're requesting that that item be heard at 11:30 rather than 11 o'clock. And Agenda Item on Page... Agenda Item 34 on Page Eight, it needs to be... It is to be heard as the Public Works Agency Waterworks District, not the County of Ventura.
Okay, what was that item again? Item 22 is to be heard at 11:30?
Right. We're requesting it be pushed to 11:30.
Okay.
From 11 o'clock to 11:30.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. All right, with those revisions, agendas as revised?
Move the agenda as revised.
Motion is second. Please vote. That two passes. With those revisions. All right, consent agenda items 10 through 14. Any revisions on the consent agenda items? Or anyone wish to hear anything? The motion is second to move the consent as presented. Please vote. And that two passes. All right, this time we have public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board under public comment? That two passes. There, there we go. All right, Caroldean Williams here, back up, and you have four minutes and 35 seconds.
Thank you.
Hold on, she's got to set the clock. Please hold on.
I hadn't even said a word and it's ticking. Roberta, come on, Roberta.
Okay.
Okay. Here's Ed Summers' campaign brochure for county treasurer who sat on the city council. And he is being endorsed by Brian Brenner, a city council member. He has lied in this. He is not trustworthy to handle the county's money. And let me give you the evidence why. In the June 22nd, 209 Grand Jury Report to the City of Ventura, to address to the city council, which they have not responded to, which is a violation of Penal Code 933(c), and the city charter, Section 703, says the mayor shall sign that document. And also a violation of the city charter is a misdemeanor under Penal Code 19. Ed Summers, you are a dishonest candidate. You were a dishonest city council member. Ed Summers. Just stop to 318, Roberta. If you're going to time seconds, you've got to keep sack of the seconds.
Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, if you would note when you're done speaking that you're done speaking, and please do not instruct the clerk on her job. Thank you.
Well, we all have ears.
Public comment. Wendy Haldeman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you guys? A couple more issues on the Wright Library. I had sent out a couple more e-mails yesterday. I know you guys are probably deluged with all kinds of things, but they're there for your perusal if you care to look over them. Library Justice did receive outside legal opinion on the memorandum of understanding that governs the library services. It was clear to him that none of the three entities that were involved in Wright's closure had the legal authority to do so. So according to what we know, the county was not authorized to say that Wright would be closed starting as early as the end of 2008. So if we could possibly get clarification on that from county council or Kathy at the commission meeting on Thursday, we would like to know what the status of that is. When we look over that MOU, there is no authorization granted to anybody to close any of those libraries that are protected under that MOU. And that still is the current document that that's governing the library services. The Ventura area has a concern with the composition of the library commission, the county library commission. Seeing as Ventura is only represented by one vote, and this is apparently the agency that gets to control all the budgets and all the library policy. We have three or four libraries, or had three or four libraries. We only have one representative on that body. Other cities have, Kathy, with your membership, they have more or less two votes on that commission, which would be Pyru, Camarillo, and Fillmore. Because I know you don't represent them formally on that commission, but you are a supervisor in those areas. So the Ventura community feels like that the composition of that commission is unfairly weighted in... By whoever is governing those unincorporated area libraries. Because they automatically are politically connected to the areas that they come from. So going forward, I think that needs to be rectified because that really is not fair to the other cities that don't have the... Their supervisor on the commission. Which brings me to my final point. We have a movement going underway in Ventura to actually withdraw from this county system. It no longer makes sense for us to belong to this system because of the administrative fees that we pay to the county library system, as well as the... There's a million dollars in personnel costs that we're paying just at Foster Library. So... And we're getting an $83,000 subsidy out of the discretionary funds it's going to foster. So all we have to do is look at the math and say, this is no longer a good deal for us. We had our most used library taken away, apparently without authority. We're paying twice the property tax we paid 10 years ago, and we have half of the hours that were given to us under this agreement. So I believe that's all for now. Thank you for your time this morning.
Ms. Haldeman? If I could just ask, I know we had two legal opinions go out yesterday, one from county council, one from a city attorney. Is it possible for them to have the legal opinion that you have so that they can review it? Ask for a response? It's very difficult for them to respond if they can't see, if they only hear a report.
Right. And I had the city council ask me for that last night. And I didn't feel comfortable giving out our legal stuff at this point unless we were all on the same page. But we would be interested in hearing both city and county councils' opinion on the matter of authorization to close a library under that memorandum of understanding. I mean...
Okay, so you're not giving out your legal opinion. Their legal opinions went public yesterday, but you're not giving out your legal opinion.
Yeah, well, yeah, I don't have a... I'm just sharing the legal opinion that we received independent of any, you know, governing body. Just looking at the contract, but there's no authorization.
But you're not sharing that publicly?
Not in anything written. No, just verbally.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes the public speaker request at this time. Board comments. All right, Supervisor Foy.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to adjourn the memory of the people on this list. And then we had the opportunity last Thursday to have the opening of the Sierra Vista New Medical Clinic. Went well. I think the healthcare agency did a tremendous job in putting together a tremendous clinic, but also in the... And the event, they must have had a 15 or 20-piece orchestra there and everything else. It was wonderful. But it wasn't paid for by the county. Nice volunteer...
It's even more awful.
Yeah, nicely it was. That was better. Nice volunteer organization. But they did a tremendous job, and it really is an opportunity, I think, the people for the county, for that part of East County, what they're doing. And then also, it was a really good part for the center. It was a great deal for what the county got on pricing for what that was, but it was also a great deal for the shopping center, for the people. It worked very, very well, and I think we had some tremendous compliments on what went on there. And it's great when you use an old movie theater because you go into it, and most doctors' offices, clinics, you know, got a eight or nine-foot ceiling. This has 25-foot ceilings, big skylights, it's beautiful. So it was... It was great. So we're really excited to see that happen. And then I think there's some more things coming in East County that will be great for us all. And at the same time, as the public, as our health system does more things to try to keep people local, I think that's good for all, not having to drive to Ventura for a lot of different things. Plus, the other thing which is nice about that is they had everything together. They had mental health, then regular... All the regular medical care, all that together where doctors can work together. Because a lot of times what they find is that a lot of times somebody's sicker because they may have a mental issue about not taking their drugs, not doing the thing. And we found the opportunity to really find ways to make it a better system and better for the patient at the end of the day. So I think that was... That was good to hear. So anyway, it was a great event, and I appreciate them putting that on. Also, I want to thank our water district for their diligence in successfully getting the 240 mobile homes in Moore Park out of the high-flood district zone. That was tremendous for those people. It's a lot of work, and I appreciate what they did for that. And then the other side, just on the local farmers, we have opened our farmer's market here that opens at the end of the month, and we've got 15 or 20 farmers coming out to share their bids. And that goes on for a few months throughout the summer. So it's always nice to see that kind of thing with the local farmers doing their work. My comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I had the pleasure of being able to attend and give some awards to the firefighter of the year and deputy of the year at St. Pascal's Men's Club last night. And it's just so nice at these organizations, this group and the Kiwanis and a lot of different organizations out there focus on making sure that these people are recognized. And sometimes it is a thankless job, so it was nice to see the Elks Club is one also that is a strong supporter and has these recognition ceremonies. I was also able to attend on Saturday, the... We had before us, we gave a resolution to the Kiwanis for graffiti removal project that they're doing in my district. And I went out on Saturday, and Norma Camacho, head of our Wildlife Protection District, was there also. And we had, you know, a few dozen Kiwanis. And it's not just the men, the women are out there doing it, too. And they got these cool T-shirts and they all... Right there, it was at Thousand Oaks Park on Moore Park Road. And right there, there's a... An opening to the channel where there was graffiti. And this group really did a lot of work that day. And I actually got some emails to my office on Monday from people who recognized that it had been cleaned up and really appreciated. They want to challenge all the other Kiwanis. Apparently, there's some 40-plus Kiwanis organizations in Ventura County alone to take this on. And they have little signs where they're adopting a channel. And we have three of those adopted, so that was nice to see. And then also, what Supervisor Foy was talking about, the nice combination of healthcare agency and the human services agency coming together and being able to provide services locally. And as I hear, we're looking at that also in the Thousand Oaks area. And it is a great combination. And you were talking about the concept of people who may have issues, physical issues, because they might have some mental problems that make it so they may not be taking their medication. But there's also the flip of that, which is people who may be exhibiting mental health issues because of the physical problem. So being able to combine those together and also provide services, human services agency there is an excellent model and one that we'll hopefully be doing also out in the Thousand Oaks area. I'd also ask that the board close and honor the people on my list, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Zaragoza?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I also had the opportunity last night to attend the Civic Night at the Nica Columbus in Oxnard where we honored our military and also our public safety employees, our firefighters. And there was a very well-attended program last night. We had our DA's office there, and we had representatives, deputies from Oxnard, Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks. It was just a great honor to be there to honor them. And I was there representing, gave the resolution on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to the Nica Columbus. And as Supervisor Parks was mentioning, too, with the Oxnard Kiwanis, it must be Kiwanis Week today or something, because we had our pancake breakfast at the Oxnard Auditorium. And we served several hundred pancakes there at the Kiwanis Club Pancake Breakfast. And that money is used again to help the community, to help our youth and individuals that need help in Oxnard. And also, I went on after that to Earth Day. We had Earth Day at Plaza Park in Oxnard where the parents and the youth are taught about saving the planet, how to help plant trees. We're giving out little trees, we're giving out individual items that could help recycle for use, reuse, and recycle for the community. for the community. And that event went very, very well, and we had quite a few representatives there too. Additionally, I went to JJC, the General Justice, the other day. They had this new program that prepares the young folks there for GED testing. And apparently, there were seven young men that received their GED certificates, and one of the youth had a perfect score, which was really outstanding. And he commented that, he thanked his grandma, his grandma was there, because that gave him an opportunity to actually study, because he would not have done it out in the street. So, I think those kind of programs that the probation is putting together are excellent opportunities for our children to help themselves. Then hopefully, hopefully then we can have follow-up on those youths when they get out of the JJC to continue those efforts and empower them to have more confidence in our society. But I think it's just an excellent program that I believe we should follow up on. And that's it, I did numerous other things, and so, but I'll limit it to that. And I also have, you know, a list to adjourn in memory of individuals on this list.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and I'm going to call one out. James Manora Tamakusi was a veteran of the U.S. Air Force, and was the Chief Deputy Auditor Controller of the County of Ventura, recently retired in 2009. Also, like to congratulate the Sheriff's Department on the arrest of the brutal murderer of the Houston's in my district. I think that's just the result of what is not, what you don't see on crime scene, the quick solution, but just steady, regular work. Would ask that the sheriff try to give us as much notice as possible before he does a press release. I know we got it at 2:25 with the press release at 3:00, just so that we can give him more help from that standpoint. I'd also like to point out that spring break is over now, everybody's back at school, and I certainly hope that kids push this last quarter, it's the toughest one for most kids to push on. I'd like to report on some rocks being moved off of Shelf Road up in Ojai. We had a landowner move rocks down onto the area where everybody parked on Shelf Road, completely inappropriate, because Shelf Road is all public. And appreciated the fact that we were able to get those rocks moved. In a letter back from the landowner, he wrote that he was frustrated that more wasn't being done to keep the lower-tiered people from my district off of Shelf Road. And I would point out, that's probably not the way to maximize cooperation from the people in the Ojai Valley, to call the people that hike on Shelf Road the lower-tiered people. But, that gives you an indication of the kind of person that we're dealing with on that particular issue. I know Kathleen Wilson is out in the audience, and I just want to let her know that she had asked a few times about the changes that we were making, allowing the short-term rehab to start at community. And at the board meeting last week, I pointed out that I thought, at the time, I hadn't mentioned it to you on the phone, but I pointed out that I thought there were probably a couple of things at work. One was the efforts of NAMI and the Mental Health Board that we have constantly pushing, but also, the publicity that you had given it over the years, sort of staying after the issue, and your more recent things probably also helped force everybody to think and continue to think through. So, since you hear this time and you didn't hear it last time, I wanted to get that sent. And then, Earth Day is, as Supervisor Ergoso brought up, coming up next week, we'll be doing our climate change awards here in the boardroom at 10:30 tomorrow, 10:30. That was very festive last time. Encourage everybody to think through your Earth Day recommitment sort of plans as we go forward. I had the benefit of seeing the sea-level alert poles down at Seaside Park in Ventura, and they're very effective at showing you how high the water would be at Seaside Park if we don't make any changes, if things go forward as they expect for the next 50 to 100 years. So, all of us can do something, and I'll use my analogy, I'll save my analogy for next week, about why we need to get moving when we come to that. But, I wanted to give everybody a heads up that, looking forward to that. And at the same time, our staff will be presenting our efforts on climate change, resource use reduction, et cetera. So, we'll be looking forward to that next week. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, I just have a couple of quick things, since we have two items on the agenda today related to the state and CSAC and the budget. I won't rail on it right now, but just to hats up, there's a recent report out from CSAC related to various bills that are being proposed by the legislators, and a couple of them I would hope we take a look at, and we can, we can see where we might weigh in on them related to reform, in the sense that the reform individual, the separate reform measures that were proposed and underway haven't progressed to a point of being on the ballot. Now, it's through a legislative process that some of these reform measures can be enacted, such as performance review for programs, and pay-as-you-go provisions for initiatives, and potentially enacting a two-year budget process and others. So, I would hope the board would track those, and if there's interest, we can do additional support to express on those measures. And then, one other comment on the, I heard this morning on the radio that they are extending the time period for those folks, public members, who might be interested in serving on the grand jury. And always encourage that we have interest in serving on the grand jury from the public, and that it's a wonderful experience, as we often hear from our grand jury members once they've served, but it's also invaluable to the work that we all do here on the board and the other areas a grand jury serves. Encourage folks to take a look at spending some time and serving on the grand jury. And then I have adjourned in memory, and one person I'd like to call out, Charles Ray Rasheers. He was a member of the Camarillo Volunteer Fire Department back in the '60s and '70s, also a reserve Ventura County Deputy Sheriff on the search and rescue team, Camarillo resident, and others on this list. And thank you, that's it. So, that concludes board comments. So, now we'll go to our regular agenda, since we have some time here. And we start out with item 32. Appointments to the Ventura County Healthcare Plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Board, Chair, Ms. Robinson, members of the board. I'm here from the healthcare agency on behalf of the Ventura County Healthcare Plan. The first item before you has to do with the Standing Committee, which was actually formed by your board a number of years ago in order to help the plan meet Knox-Kean requirements. And that committee oversees quality as well as the grievance process for the plan. That committee is made up of two ex-officio members, one is a chair, somebody from the Board of Supes, and the county CEO. And there are nine other Standing Committee members that are appointed by the Board of Supervisors. We have two of those members who are plan providers, and seven are actually plan enrollees. Two of those members are regulars and one's alternate. And of the seven enrolled members, four are regular and three are alternates. And the members are all appointed for terms that vary between one to three years. Two of those plan providers and three enrollees have completed their terms, and so there needs to be new appointments made for those. And one provider, as well as one enrollee, is actually a reappointment, and the rest are new appointments. It's before you.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay. Pleasure, the board. Motion and a second to adopt the recommended action. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. I think that really, that Standing Committee has served us very well.
Does a great job.
All right, item 33.
I'm staying.
Okay, good.
And this has to do, again, with the Ventura County Healthcare Plan. In addition to servicing county employees, the plan also has two state-sponsored programs. One of those is the Healthy Families Program, which serves children between the ages of birth through their 18th year. And those are children who would not, don't normally qualify for Medicare. It is a state-sponsored program, and currently, the plan has about 3,800 children enrolled in that program. Great program for kids, low co-payments, and thorough coverage for healthcare. The second program is called AIM, it's the Access for Infant and Mothers Program. That's a much smaller program, and covers women who are pregnant and who otherwise either don't have full coverage for pregnancy services or would not qualify. Low enrollment in that, we currently have at any given time about 38 people in that plan. The contracts for both of these usually are five years, and from time to time, there are amendments that come up as new regulations come before the Knox-Kean requirements. Those are passed through in the way of amendments. So, we are requesting that this board authorize the healthcare agency director or designee to sign those as those come forward and are needed.
Very good, any questions?
Madam Chair, that covers children from, I think, zero to 18, isn't that?
Correct, from birth through 18.
And we're also now helping out about 3,800, 4,000 kids.
Right, somewhere around 3,800 currently.
That's outstanding, because that, you know, helps, you know, the kids, and keeps them out of the ER also too.
Absolutely.
It's extremely important.
And it covers preventive services as well as any acute care needs, so it's a thorough plan.
And the preventive is extremely important.
Absolutely. And very low co-pays on the part of family, they have small premiums that they pay on a monthly basis, and then for each visit, it's somewhere around $5 for them to get regular care and services.
Thank you, fine.
Do you have other questions?
Motion to approve.
Pleasure, motion to approve the recommended action and a second, please vote. That passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, item 34, it's an item heard by the Water Works District.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson. Reddy Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. Ventura County Water Work District Number 19 provides water supply to the community of Somas and surrounding areas. Laloma Mutual Water Company, a small mutual, provides water supply to about, less than 10 properties and located on the northwest corner of the district boundary, as shown in our Exhibit 1 attached to our staff report. Laloma is within the sphere of influence of Ventura County Water Work District Number 19, and also is within Cuyegus and Metropolitan Water District of Southern California for imported water supply. And Laloma has requested District 19 to annex the property to Water Work District 19 for water supply reliability. And we are recommending that your board adopt the resolution in our staff report, and that concludes my verbal presentation.
Any questions?
Who's providing them water right now?
They have one existing well, it's really a very old well, and the production is going down, and they're concerned about the supply.
And we have capacity to do this in this district?
Well, our recommendation, if your board were to approve our recommendation, then we'll sit down with them and talk about transfer of GMA allocations that they have with the well that will come to District 19. To the extent that their demand exceeds GMA allocation, we'll be asking them to pay for the imported water rates.
Just that portion?
Just that, right.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have two questions. One, there's no rate increase or anything in here, I'm not used to having this happen. That's a joke, but I do want to point out, in your letter, and it's directly related to the question that Supervisor Foy just asked, and it says, "Should mutual use more water than the transfer GMA allocation? The district will import water from Cuyegus Municipal Water District." I want us to read this really loud, "And charge mutual the prevailing imported water rates, which could be a significant increase in their rates," correct?
Yes, sir.
So, I just want all of us up here on the board to know, if we do take this action, it's very likely they're going to use more water than their allocation, we're going to then have to import the water from Cuyegus, and if it's 20% more, we're going to have to raise rates 20%, and they may or may not be happy, but they are aware of that as they're entering into this agreement with us.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? All right, I just hope that's clearly on the record.
You make a very good point. What does that also do to this required reduction that is needed through most of these areas? How do they calculate that in?
Yeah, if a new area is annexed to your district, your baseline allocations are increased from Metropolitan to Cuyegus to us. The baseline allocation will be increased to the extent that you annex new properties to the district.
And then going back to Supervisor Bennett's comment, what would they have done if they would have stayed where they're at? Where would they have got the extra water that they may, they wouldn't?
Well, the challenge they have right now is to invest possibly half a million dollars to drill a new well, which the production is going down, and if they exceed their GMA allocation, they'll be subject to penalties equal to imported water rates anyway. So, they will be paying those rates either through us or to themselves. But what we see is the economy of scale for them to be part of the larger district, and they'll be able to depend on our service.
Okay, so the extra half million that they were going to pay, they get out of that by going this way, but it doesn't strain us in any other way besides this imported water? I mean, we have the ability to do this without adding additional cost to the rest of this community?
That's correct.
Okay.
But don't say, Pacala, that if you give Cuyegus water, the quality of water is much better too?
Yes, sir.
A lot better than what they...
Certainly. The well they have right now provides a TDS of about 600 parts per million, and the Cuyegus is about 300 parts per million.
So, that's a plus too?
Yes, sir.
In case you have to use it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions?
They'll pay more for every bit of that quality.
Okay, pleasure, the board. There is a motion. Land a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, item 35, Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. This is an item that both Supervisor Long and myself reviewed when we, as members of the Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO. And the LAFCO board decided that it would be best if the county went forward to initiate the dissolution of two service area, one's a district and one is a service area that serves Amundson Ranch. In the original thought was that the service areas would provide urban services to what was going to be a city on Amundson Ranch. Now, obviously, it is a state park, and so it is no longer necessary to have these kind of bureaucratic agencies formed. So, it's LAFCO's commission's desire to, for the sake of, I'm sure we don't have unnecessary districts, that we go ahead and dissolve this. It will be cheaper and more efficient to have it done if the Board of Supervisors initiates it than if LAFCO does it, it's all tax dollars, so this is a wiser use, a more efficient use of tax dollars. So, I don't know if Supervisor Long wants to make some comments on this, but this is something that the LAFCO commission has requested.
Yes, and certainly in agreement with this. Under the LAFCO actions of a statewide study years ago, it was required now for LAFCO to do municipal service reviews, and in doing those reviews, they look at districts, special districts, particularly as to whether they are performing their duty, are responsible, are necessary, and as was, as says in this letter and as Supervisor Parks pointed out, with the change in the ownership of that property and the actions that basically aren't required any further for any functioning reason, and in the interest of the taxpayers, that to dissolve this via a board action, to initiate the action, to dissolve this via board action dissolution is, I think, both the appropriate place for it to take place, and also, it'll be a...
So, I mean, this is something that we will always be there and continue, and it's just, to me, is, you know, an unnecessary part of our bureaucracy.
Yeah, I just, the idea of spending twenty thousand, a lot of the things we get to spend money on is that was my thing if we don't have to.
Well, I, you know, under municipal service review law, I think that there is a, it's incumbent on all LAFCOs to look at those districts that are defunct and take action. Is there a penalty if we don't? Probably not.
I mean, because it has been sitting for a while, right? It hasn't been used for a while. Yeah. I mean, I understand where you're coming from. I just hate to spend money that we don't have to if it just sits on the books and nobody, nobody, a lot of the place we can spend twenty thousand dollars.
It also helps close the door on this. You know, surprisingly, this land is still, the state doesn't want to let go of the zoning on the land. You know, right now, they're still looking at a, because they think the zoning is currently, instead of open space, will allow them for a greater asset. On their books, while it's a state park, they're looking at this as still zoned for a city. So, this, again, helps close the books on that, too. So, I think this is more in line with the way it ought to be, and fortunately, there aren't any funds in this. There isn't any, there isn't any function to it. So, it's just like cleaning up this. So, I think it's, I think it's an appropriate thing to do.
Rather than every year having LAFCO have to do a review of the district and the analysis and continuing to keep it on their books.
And it goes through our planning department also.
I'll second the motion. There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Passes four-one. Okay. Do you wish to do thirty-six next? Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. This one here is the result of an error that occurred back when I was mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, when the city signed an agreement with the county to provide funding for its libraries from the library taxes from specific areas in the unincorporated area around Thousand Oaks. And calculation, or actually, I think it was, two numbers were transposed, that inadvertently caused a lack of funding to the City of Thousand Oaks, an underpayment. And the CEO's staff has reviewed it and found eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of underpayment to the City of Thousand Oaks for their libraries. So, I think it's important that we move immediately on this and move forward on it so the city can get those funds. They're in a hard shape right now with their libraries. So, this will enable them to plan for their budget year, for their upcoming budget year, and ensure that hopefully, they won't have to do any layoffs. It's unfortunate that these funds weren't provided to the city as required, but as I said, we're human, there are errors, and this was a mistake that was made. But I think very fortunate that it was caught. It was caught as a result of the fact that the Library Commission had decided not to move forward and transfer library tax money to the City of Thousand Oaks. The Board of Supervisors went ahead and took on that role and used our general fund instead of library tax dollars. And in doing that, transferred from the library director's decision and information to provide the library tax to the city, that information and transfer then went to the CEO's office. They reviewed the numbers and found this, this mistake that had been made way back in, I guess, the year two thousand. So, because of that, and over the years, that underpayment continued. That amounted to eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I think it's also important that we include interest with that, because that was a loss to the city, and allow the CEO's office and the Audit Controller's office to work out what that is, and work with the City of Thousand Oaks. But I do think it's really important, and in good faith, that the county does provide what is owed, and show the county's intent to process the payment both accurately and swiftly. I know that we are in continuing talks with the city to work out a long-term agreement for the return of library tax to that city. But when you, when you realize that these funds would have been coming out every year out of that library fund, we do have to really consider the shape that our libraries are in. You know, obviously, there are problems throughout the county. A lot of it has to do with the less property tax, but also what the state's doing. So, this is just, I think, part of a larger issue when we realize that we just don't have these kind of funds. But this is, you know, this is a very positive thing. It is something that's very needed, and while it was unfortunate that the error occurred, it's really nice to know that we can afford to do that. We do have funds, and there is an account which I'm asking us to use. It's called the Audit Exceptions Account for disallowances. It's a designation for audit disallowances, because I imagine these things occur from time to time. So, we do have funds in that account, and I would ask that the board move forward. I think we are obligated to do this, and approve the agenda as recommended, which is to provide eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-plus interest in order to pay the full unpaid past library services to the City of Thousand Oaks. And if there are no questions, I'll just go ahead and make that a motion. And I do realize it takes a four-fifth vote.
So, motion and a second. Are there any questions on this item?
Let's make a comment.
Yes.
I just, you know, these things, like I said, do happen. I just appreciate the integrity of the CEO's office and the Audit Controller's office and the idea, because, you know, the City of Thousand Oaks didn't come to us. It was the finding the issue, fixing it, making it happen, and I just appreciate that integrity, that we go back as county government, we do what we say we'll do, and we do it. Even, you know, when you have millions and millions of transactions that happen in a large county like this. So, I just appreciate being a part of a county that has that integrity.
Okay, and the auditor is requested to speak on this?
I'm just asking for clarification as to whether you are going to approve the budget recommendation. You'd have to reduce the designation and increase appropriations and special accounts and contributions to have this payment taken place.
Yes. That is the action? Okay. There's a motion on this item? And is there a second?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. My screen doesn't show that. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Not always easy to do, but certainly responsible to do.
It's a good thing.
Very much. Okay, all right. Now, we are at nine-thirty, and we will move ahead with our nine-thirty time certain. And we're going to do, when are we doing this one? I'm sorry, telecommunications, is that?
Great. Well, thank you. This is a, this is great, because I enjoyed the opportunity to do this. When you talk about telecommunications, you talk about what is the opportunity in our county when people have a need to communicate with the Sheriff's Department and public safety. And when you, when you talk about almost four-hundred-thousand calls a year going into this, this department with over a hundred thousand of these nine-one-ones, you want to make sure that you have a telecommunications group and a system and everything else that works well for the people of this county. And I think it's the opportunity for us to recognize the people, the system, and all that works before all of us. Again, I believe that one of the keys that all of us pay our taxes for that we have is public safety, and that we are there, we're safe when we need to be, and the ability for us to communicate when a loved one or somebody's hurt or needs some kind of action is critical. So, it's an honor to have the opportunity for the, to make this telecommunications week proclamation. So, I'm going to ask Ms. Crumbak to come down and accept this, and I'm sure she has the comments, and I'll meet you down there.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is Robinson, Chairwoman Long, members of the board. Thank you very much for recognizing the work that our public safety dispatchers do year, day in, day out, and all year long. Certainly, it's a demanding job, but one with rewards, and it's a pleasure and an honor to work for the County of Ventura and to have your support. We do appreciate it. Our dispatcher of the year for 2010 is Kristy Schelfant, and she's been with us since June of 2001. She was selected by her peers and her supervisors to be our dispatcher of the year. Unfortunately, she's at training, and she couldn't be here today. So, I'd like to also say thank you very much for recognizing her, and again, thank you so much for your support. We appreciate it.
This is Annette Cosgrove. She's our supervisor and her staffer for today.
Roberta. I have anybody, I don't see one of my staff members.
It's below your pink grade, isn't it?
Yeah. And thank you for the excellent job you all do. Thank you. All right, and now, we'll move to item fifteen, which is an awards presentation by the American Public Works Association for Project of the Year. And we have folks here to do that. And Professional of the Year, yes. Oh, he's here. He's back. Okay. Lori Prentice, Lori Prentice is the President of the American Public Works Association, Ventura County Chapter, and she'll be making the presentation.
Is this another retirement party for Butch?
How many, how many more?
This is the eighteenth Butch Britt retirement party in history. Members of the board and everyone else here, thank you for having us. It's my honor to be able to present Butch Britt with, again, with the same plaque he's already seen a couple of times, but we keep taking it back so we could do it here in one more public embarrassment. But this is our first annual Professional of the Year Award that we started this year to recognize public works professionals in Ventura County area. And I think Butch was up against about five or six other engineers and public professionals in our area, from other cities in our area. And he pushed them aside. And anyways, we want to honor Butch with our first annual Public Works Professional of the Year.
These are for you to say.
No, it's not. You would think after this many times, I'd get good at it. Congratulations, Butch.
Congratulations again, Mr. Britt. He's here without a tie, so he's slowly loosening up. And please-
Any more retirement parties? So, on to the next one. Every year, the Public Works Association, National and Ventura County recognizes outstanding public works projects and the professionals behind them in five different categories. And this year, it's our honor from, from the Ventura County Chapter to honor the County of Ventura for an outstanding project in the emergency construction repair for their microwave network project.
Okay. And this is it here? That must be?
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you, Lori, and the APWA for this special honorable award. This is a large, a large project, took over four years and costing over sixteen million dollars. And there were a lot of staff members that were very dedicated, worked very hard on this project to make it possible. We would like to recognize those project members, and if you are in the audience, if you could please stand up, and I will just read off a list of people. These are the steering committee members from the fire district and the Sheriff's Department, including Chief Bob Roper, Assistant Chief Michael DePlante, Barry Blunt, Frank Strong, Jim Norris, Vaughn Miller, the Sheriff's Department, Brent Hurst, James Carl Carpenter, and of course, the SEO's Department, the Director, Richard Jackson, Dean Dan Richards, Scott Allison, Dean Curtis, Joe Baccat, Dennis Crandall, Pete Baker, and Public Works Director, Jeff Pack, Phil Nielsen, Chris Cooper, Turner Spock, Diana Mendez. These people, they worked tirelessly on this project, and throughout the seamless, our teamwork, we were able to put this project together, and we want to thank all of them. And please give them all a big round of applause. And last, but not least, we want to thank all the Board of Supervisors for your unanimous support in the CEO office for your support for this project. Thank you.
And Susan Pam, thank you for your project management leadership on this. And congratulations. Congratulations to all of you. Great work, and, yeah, excellent collaboration. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay, now, we don't have anything till ten AM, because we've completed our agenda. Is that correct? That is correct. Get a break. Shall we do any closed session? Can we get anything accomplished in twenty minutes?
I think the CEO would like you to consider item twenty-nine.
Item twenty-nine. Oh, shall we do that? Okay, we'll go into closed session, board members, and see what we can get accomplished. We are efficient.
Okay, now, we don't have anything till 10:00 AM because we've completed our agenda. Is that correct? That is correct. Get a break. Shall we do any closed session? Can we get anything accomplished in 20 minutes?
I think the CEO would like you to consider item 29.
Item 29. Oh, shall we do that? Okay, we'll go into closed session, board members, and see what we can get accomplished. We are efficient. Thank you. Now, I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So thank you very much. I just want to compliment you. You know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners.
To renew our commitment to address the needs of crime victims and to honor those who provide valuable services for victims of crime in our county. The commemorative ceremony will be held here at the Government Center in the Central Fountain Area. It'll begin at noon. We hope that you will come out and join us. After a short program, there will be a march around the Government Center. Our speaker this year is CHP Officer Retired Tony Pettifari, who is a remarkable individual. I think you'll very much enjoy hearing his remarks. Obviously, with us today is Interface Children Family Services and the Coalition. I'd like to give them a moment to make some comments as well. Thank you.
Good morning. We just very much appreciate the partnership, the recognition of victims. From the very beginning of a victim's experience, all the way through to the intervention and the treatment, the healing, the sheltering, the healing stages, it really is about a partnership. And it's a unique opportunity and I think responsibility for us to partner across all kinds of different disciplines in order to really make that experience for the victim as good as we can, helping to have them have a voice in what's happening to them and obviously healing and restoring them back into their own community as they would want to be. So, we're really pleased to be part of that partnership. I think we all recognize that there's really challenging times for finding ways to keep the services going, get the services there, but I'm confident that in a partnership way, we can, we can continue that in our county.
On behalf of the Coalition to End Family Violence, we appreciate the board's support throughout the years, especially in such hard economic times. Forgetting victims is a community effort that we need to continue to provide and make sure that children who witness violence are also provided services. The Coalition has a long history of networking with Interface and with Ventura County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Center. So again, thank you for reaffirming your commitment to victims' rights.
Just briefly, every day, we have people walk through our doors who are crime victims or loved ones of individuals who have been murdered. And their lives are forever altered by these crimes. And they come to us at what is no doubt the lowest point in their life. And they look to us for that measure of justice, that measure of compassion and respect. And having these partnerships makes us more effective at administering justice. It makes us more effective at helping them restore their lives through very, very dark circumstances. And so I just want to thank this board also for your longstanding support of this program. As you know, at the event on April 22nd, it is our practice to either have the Chair of the Board or a representative of this body again present the proclamation in a public setting. And so we look forward to seeing you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. But I just want to compliment too, you know, you look at the District Attorney's Office, and you guys are hard prosecutors. You don't let people off easy, but you also have the compassion, and we really appreciate that. And obviously, we are nonprofit partners. They're just wonderful, the Coalition and Interface. So, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you all. One second. No, let's just give it... I had a speaker on that item, Carol Dean-Williams. So, that remains what time?
Three minutes, 22 seconds.
Three minutes, 22 seconds.
Now, for the record, they're all leaving. They're not interested in this item or the public to speak to it. I just advocated for the crime victims. I just spent 40 minutes. There's only four criminal trials in process, courtroom 45, 46, 24, and 25. And the rest of it is secret. The Secretary for the Executive Officer of the Court. Here's an April 7th, 2010 letter from the District Attorney. Let me read you this. "The District Attorney's Office currently has 15,376 open misdemeanor and felony cases, including 10,945 misdemeanor cases in warrant status, 2,199 other misdemeanor cases, 608 felony cases in warrant status, and 1,624 other felony status." Add that up real fast. You know how much that adds up to? That's more than the population of Santa Paula! Can you imagine more than the population of Santa Paula being all criminals? And we live in the safest county, and the victims gets their rights taken care of by justice? Four times the population of Ojai? Criminals! I don't think there's any justice for the victims. There's only four courtroom trials right now as we speak, and the rest of the courtrooms are secret. So where are those judges that have empty courtrooms? Where are those victims' cases? What's happening here? There's timeframes. Justice delayed is justice denied. Maybe that number didn't sink in. 30,742! And the criminal courtrooms are empty! That's where the victims wants to see justice, is in the courtroom. Why are they empty? And why did I have to spend 40 minutes and the Secretary of Michael Planet tells me it's secret? She can't even tell me the people versus who! It's secret! We live in a society where the public has to know this information. Well, I'm going to be a reporter on this particular subject, and I'm going to make sure I'm going to get it one way or another. So, crime victims, you're not going to get any justice in Ventura County. No, no, no. No, no, no.
Time's up. Okay, board members, we'll now move to Item 17, which is, I will present this, and it is to proclaim April 12th through the 18th as Oral Head and Neck Cancer Awareness Week, and April 16th specifically as Oral Head and Neck Cancer Awareness Day. And I know we have a president in the boardroom. Good morning, Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Nguyen is, has been with us, was with us last year in bringing this forward. He is a surgeon with Anacapa Surgical Associates and is much admired by his team members and certainly all those who work with him. Very much dedicated and very much a leader in the issues related to oral head and neck cancer. He advocates for this recognition so that the public becomes more informed as to what they need to be looking for proactively and also to make sure that they are understanding things they can do to take care of themselves. He is a graduate medical, he did his medical residency at University of South Florida and also attended UC Riverside and UCLA. I know also in the boardroom, we have Michael Powers, our Agency Director, Paul Lorenz, our Hospital Administrator, Joan Araho, the Deputy Director of the Healthcare Agency, Pamela Lindman, Ambulatory Care Chief Operations Officer, Dr. Michelle Laba, our Ambulatory Care Medical Care Director, and others. And others. The list is longer than usual. But it's, they're here because they too recognize the issue. Recognize that this is important. And I'm going to read the resolution, Doctor, then I'll bring it down to present to you and I'll offer you to make some comments, please. "Over 50,000 American citizens are diagnosed every year with cancer of the head and neck. Less than 60% of all the head and neck cancer patients will live five years following their diagnosis. Over 85% of all oral head and neck cancers could have been prevented, and only a small percentage of the people of the United States understand the disease, its causes, its treatments or prevention techniques. Significant number of individuals treated for this disease encounter disability that certainly involves their breathing, swallowing, speaking, physical and visual difficulties. With increased awareness of this disease, process could result in earlier diagnosis, lower functional disability, higher survival rates. Education informs and helps with the prevention. Ventura County Medical Center remains committed to supporting this awareness, the education and the research in the head and neck oncology." Anacapa Surgical Associates Ear-Nose and Throat Clinic will again this year offer free head and neck cancer screenings on April 16th from 1:00 to 4:00 at our service location on Loma Vista, 3170 Loma Vista Road, Suite B. And with that, I'll bring the resolution down to again acknowledge both the week and the day of April 16th. And I'll let the board know, last year, I took the opportunity to go into the clinic during this time so I could see what the experience was. And it was one, very wonderful in both the front office staff and how they treat their patients as they're in the waiting area, and certainly in Dr. Nguyen's expertise and how generous he was with both his time and the questions that I asked and had received. Good answers, always good answers to. But I think it is important to continue to recognize this day, one, for the good services that we provide through our medical system with the clinic and with Dr. Nguyen's leadership and the public education piece, for the public to be aware that there is a great need to be informed and be treated. So I'll step down and present this, and please say a few words, Doctor.
I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Mike Powers from the Healthcare Agency for making this possible, this proclamation and this week. I do think it is very important. We continue to make great strides in our battle and war against cancer, but especially in head and neck cancer, there still remains much to be done. Even despite the last 30 years of research and progress, the prognosis for head and neck cancer still remains dismal. The key again is early detection and prevention. So I think that's really what our goal is, to get the word out and to make people aware so that these are things, head and neck cancer in particular, very strongly associated with smoking and drinking. These are behaviors which can definitely be modified. So, again, I want to thank everyone for making this possible.
Thank you. Took his lab coat off to come in here. But I like this one, there. All you have to do is open your mouth. It's great. You ought to think you ought to sell those in the clinic. Doc, thank you. We appreciate your efforts. Thank you all. All right, now, we will move on to the Executive, County Executive Office. We're going to have a presentation on our introduction to budget issues.
Yes. Chair Long and board members, what we want to do today is cover two things. One is what's happening at the state with next year's budget. And secondly, and in more detail, a little bit more about our debt service. You've had questions about what we do with debt service, so we're going to go into depth, into some depth with that today. In terms of what's happening at the state, not much appears that there is no activity relative to what is going to happen next year. So, the ramifications of the $20 billion deficit, approximate $20 billion deficit, we still don't know. You have one item on the board agenda, or you had one item today on the board agenda talking about the implications for child welfare. And that certainly is a vulnerable population and a vulnerable area for next year's state budget. But in terms of any specifics, we will have to wait till after the May revise, and then it will be unclear also what the state is going to do. So, what we're focusing on here today is advising your board of what is currently projected as we move forward with debt service and how that impacts our budget. So, Mr. Dursey?
Thank you. I think what we're trying to do today is an attempt to show there's actually some method to our madness of how we develop our debt service going forward and trying to make projections overall for maintaining facilities in the county. This is our outstanding general fund obligations. We call it general fund obligations because it's backed by the general fund, even though a lot of these, a lot of this debt is for other functions other than the general fund. For example, VCMC, even Harbor, sometimes the fire district will borrow through the general fund, use the general fund debt and capacity and rating to secure financing for other departments. So, this is the overall debt that's outstanding right now in the neighborhood of $130 million. Commercial paper, our 2003 CLPs, and then we just issued, if you recall, in last late summer, 2009 CLPs for $89 million, almost $90 million, and we haven't paid a lot of that down yet. These are the capital planning policy. This is in our admin manual. This is a, we have a two major capital, we have a capital planning policy and we have a debt utilization policy within the county admin manual. Some of the items, these are how we try to look at and prioritize capital project requests that come in from departments. Some of the ones, a couple I'd like to identify as, for an example, is the taking advantage of unique financing opportunities is something we're always looking at. For example, in the medical center area, they, the federal government came up with, and the state came up with, AB or SB 1732 Plan, where they would pay basically half of the debt service on certain projects. We took advantage of that. We take advantage of overall, when we try to take lower interest rates, we're trying to take advantage right now of our commercial paper, which has an excessively low interest rate currently, although it's a variable rate instrument. It does add opportunities at this point in time because of the low interest rate we're paying currently. The other items, operating and maintenance costs, we always have to look at the operation and maintenance costs. I think a good example is Todd Road Jail. Even if we could afford to build the building, the operational costs are, would go up absolutely substantially compared to a building that's just replacing a current building, the operational costs may, may not go up. As a matter of fact, operational costs may go down because of a new building. So those are the types of things we're looking at in that regard. The other items are the cost versus benefit. That's clearly something we're always looking at, is the cost versus the benefit of a new facility versus leasing, those types of things. And then, of course, sources of funding is something that's significant for our purposes going forward. This is out of the debt utilization policy. This is the debt limitation aspect in our debt utilization policy, which is again part of the administrative manual. You see, the number one is how, the total debt outstanding is not greater than 1% of the AV. That's $1 billion. That would be about $1 billion. Clearly, we don't have that kind of debt outstanding, thank goodness, because that would be significant relative. Currently outstanding, we have $132 million. So I think we're well below that particular guideline. These guidelines we developed through information from GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, and the rating agencies on how they kind of evaluate and how they judge different counties and their ability to pay their debt. So these are, I would say, at the very high end. But they, but I think what it does for the rating agencies, it gives them some information relative to, if you're at the, you know, pushing toward that high end, they need, they're probably a lot more aware of what's, they pay a lot more attention to your debt. On the, the number two there is the total debt service itself, not the debt outstanding, but the annual debt service, including the POBs, again, not more than 6% of total general fund expenditures. Right now, it's about $50 million would be 6% of total general fund expenditures. Our current budget has $21.5 million of debt service and about 10.8 million of that is in the general fund.
And, you know, as Paul mentioned, that's kind of the outside standard. I think that when we, when we've talked to people at the rating agencies, they've said, wow, if you, but if you were at 6%, that would be pretty dramatic, and I think that it would have an impact on our, on our actual rating from the rating agencies itself. So, while that's an outside standard, it's something that we're not, we don't want to aspire to, I guess. That's the, that's the point I want to make.
I just asked a question. You said, I missed one thing. You said, on the, on number two, you know, the 6% would be approximately $50 million. We're currently $21.5 million, 10.8 million of which is general fund?
That's correct. And that's just appropriations. That doesn't count revenue offset and those types of things for those particular, some, there's a number of revenue offsets in regard to those appropriations. For example, I just mentioned the 1732 program would offset half, a little over half actually of debt service in VCMC for the kitchen and lab and their, the new office structure that they have going on, those types of things. Well, not the office structure, I take that back. It's kitchen, lab, and is, okay, thank you.
Could you tell me what the 1732 program is?
That's a program where it's part of the Medi-Cal program where they'll reimburse us for debt service on certain capital projects. I think it was before a certain year, like 1985, that they had to be approved by the Board of Supervisors, maybe it was 95. It was quite some time ago. But we gradually, going through the process of implementing those particular capital projects that were approved during that time period. And the state has made good on those programs as we go forward.
What was the year on that, Mr. Powers?
94.
94, thank you.
The Attachment C of the Preliminary Budget Board Letter is something we provide, started last year. We've, we have part of our capital, part of the administrative manual and the capital projects, debt utilization, has a capital planning committee, which is comprised of four department heads that kind of review these ongoing capital requests by departments. And we try to identify the ones that we think are priorities that could use, could be coming up in the future. Not necessarily in the, they're not necessarily in the budget and generally not in the budget, but we try to make you aware of some priority items that are out there that need to be looked at. Last year, we had these items, last year, about in June, when we, when we presented the preliminary budget to your board, these items were in the Attachment C, which we call Attachment C to the Board.
Before you go into these items, which of the four department heads that meet?
It's the County Executive Officer, the Order Controller, the Director of General Services, and the Director of Public Works.
Thanks.
The Attachment C included all these items, which is, you see, just read right down. None of these, we've actually started yet, although the land use management system, I think we mentioned that we have that currently scheduled in our budget schedule for next fiscal year.
That's the Acela?
That's the Acela, that's correct. The rest are out there, and we're trying to develop a long-term plan of how we can, how we can possibly pay for these. For this, that's for last year budget process. This year, we have a number of them that are the same, and we've added some. But again, this is preliminarily, this is not our final budget, but this is what we've, we anticipate being on our Attachment C of the Preliminary Budget Letter for this fiscal year. Okay? So you see, a lot of them are the same. The first six items, I believe, in the general fund are the same. The first couple in the non-general fund are the same. We've added the voice, Voice Over Internet Protocol System and the Moore Park Clinic at the Ruben Castro Center. Those two items we've added into this year's, what we call Attachment C. What does all this mean and how do we work it out and how do we work it through our system? I think the next, the next slide is pretty busy, but it kind of shows how we try to anticipate long-term, how we go through the process and fold in some of these long-term projects.
Before you go to the next slide, could you go back, please?
Sure.
HCA Systems, 22.8 million. Slide right before.
Yeah. I'll have to go back. There you go.
There you go. HCA Systems, 22.8. What are we talking about?
That's a VCMC.
Is there some other time when we're going to get detail on these?
They would, you'd get detail on those when they, I just didn't have enough room on this particular slide, so I just put them in there. On the Attachment C, we'll get more detail, but it's basically, there's a VCMC computer system, a mental health computer system, and a public health computer system that are all comprised. A lot of it's coming from outside funding sources, part of it's ARIF funding and part of it's grant funding. So we would expect that those, and one of them is Ventura County Healthcare Plan and Enterprise Fund, which has been developing a plan to pay for that new system also. So there are, they're developing a process where they can pay for those systems. A lot of it is actually grant-funded and outside funding sources. But that's, again, the same process that we do in the general fund, we look at departments as they request going forward capital projects for specific departments, if, on an enterprise fund basis. For example, Harbor will look at that, that project and how they can afford that project with their current operations, those types of things. So we're looking at the long-term, making sure that things are affordable on a long-term basis. Same with Medical Center, because of its, because of the general fund contribution, we do have a vested interest in the Medical Center and its, and its ability to make ends neat. So we definitely look closely at those.
I have a question, if I might. So you first gave us 2009, 2010 Attachment C preliminary budget, and now you, then you gave us the 2010, 2011. And so some of those projects, like the Acela program, which weren't a part of the last budget, is now being proposed for the future budget. But I'm seeing that the figures are a little bit different. So I know that we're going to get details on it, you know, on one page, the program's $4 million, and on the next, next year, it's up to $4.2 million. Is it additional projects or that project is now assumed to be more expensive?
I think the latter. It's assumed to be a little more expensive at this point in time. Sometimes the numbers are refined. They've been updated for new systems or new technology, what have you, but it's basically a...
Same project, different costs associated with?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
This particular, as you, first column is our current year's debt service. And that's the debt payment we have this year. It's about $20 million. About, almost $6 million of that trans, so that's not really long-term debt. The trans payment is not particularly a long-term debt. What we've tried to do is tie this particular schedule into our debt service budget, which is budget unit 1075, which is a separate budget unit. But we've tried to tie these numbers into that particular budget unit. So that's why we've included the trans, which is technically not long-term debt. It's a short-term debt that's paid off within one fiscal year. But you see, those, those are the current debt service that we have on the different projects we have outstanding and the Gonzalez Road Courts and Fillmore Building. One thing that's note, look down at the bottom, the current debt service, those are revenue offsets at the lower end. The trans premium, you don't need to worry about. But the JGC Courts, the $1.4 million, offsets almost completely the $1.4 million that's in the debt payment in the, in the upper, upper ones. So the Courts is an area also that we have put on the general fund back, so to speak, and issued debt for the Courts in the neighborhood of about $20 million to build a court building. It's on our debt schedule, it's on our debt burden, and we don't really, we benefit from the county as a whole and the public as a whole, but the building is actually owned by the Courts. So that, when that debt is paid off through this court process, the money comes in from a court, a special trust fund from collections and that type of thing. So the money comes in from the Courts to pay for the debt service on the court building.
So Paul, excuse me, so that's just an accounting?
That's an accounting issue, right. So that's the way we've constructed this, from an accounting standpoint and a debt service standpoint, to fully offset those dollars.
How we pay them.
Did we also have something similar with the Gonzalez Building where instead of paying rent now, we're paying for mortgage, if you will?
That's correct. Well, the Gonzalez, the 1 million, the Gonzalez Road, the 2220, which we actually paid cash for, and we, we kind of paid cash for, but we paid it off over two, two years financing. And the second year is, in this particular year, notice the $5.396 million. It's about eight down on, from the top, 2220 Gonzalez. And then notice the next year's payment goes down to zero, because we had, we paid that off over a two-year period using commercial paper.
Okay, but under debt service, you've got it, I guess it's not over the years then? You have the 672,000?
It's on our debt schedule, it's on our debt burden, and we don't really, we benefit from the county as a whole and the public as a whole, but the building is actually owned by the courts. So that, when that debt is paid off through this court process, the money comes in from a court, a special trust fund from collections and that type of thing. So the money comes in from the courts to pay for the debt service on the court building.
So Paul, excuse me, so that's just in the accounting?
That's an accounting issue, right. So that's the way we've constructed this, from an accounting standpoint and a debt service standpoint, to fully offset those dollars.
How we pay them off.
Did we also have something similar with the Gonzalez building where instead of paying rent now, we're paying for, for mortgage, if you will?
That's correct. Well, the Gonzalez, the one million, the Gonzalez Road, the twenty-two twenty, which we actually paid cash for, and we, we kind of paid cash for, but we paid it off over two, two years financing. And the second year is, in this particular year, notice the five point three nine six million dollars. It's about eight down on, from the top, twenty-two twenty Gonzalez. And then notice the next year's payment goes down to zero, because we had, we paid that off over a two-year period using commercial paper.
Okay, but under debt service, you've got it, I guess it's not over the years then? You have the six hundred and seventy-two thousand?
That's a, that's twenty-two forty Gonzalez, and that's some of the money coming back from, from Medical Center and, and some other rents, kind of, that we, we get to offset some of the costs.
Thank you.
And where does, where does that, where's that money go? The twenty-two forty, current debt service revenue offset, does that go into the debt service?
Yeah, it goes into the debt service account to help offset the debt service, uh, total debt service. So you notice the bottom line, it's about twelve million dollars is our net debt service amount compared to the nineteen point two million dollars.
Because we're not making, the payments on the twenty-two forty, okay, so the payments on the twenty-two forty, so the net, net cost for us is about three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That's correct. And the difference really is because we have a number of general fund departments in that, in that facility also, some non-general funds, some general. We wouldn't charge specifically the non-general fund departments.
Got it, okay.
And then you notice the, same with the Fillmore Building, we have some non-general funds in that building. And then the JJC detention facility, initially, this is one of those funding sources that we took advantage of. There's, if you recall, your board adopted a, a proposal, must have been, I can't tell you the year, but it was to lock in the courthouse, the detention facility construction funds for this particular construction building. So we don't have it completely covered with debt service with the revenue coming in from the, from the trust fund, but it does cover a good piece of it, about half, a little over half. So that's, that's again, a, taking advantage of, of the ability to get some funding from outside sources. Anyway, what we've done is we've, we've gone across there and tried to long-term project some of these other projects, propose new debt service down there, the land use system, you see three and a half million dollars for, for one year, and then eight hundred and sixty-six in the, in the eleven and twelve, and then going away after the next, the next three years. And the voice over internet protocol is about a million three per year. So we folded those into these projections, assuming that those are the years that they'll come on, and those are the years we'll be able to afford those particular long-term capital projects. Work furlough upgrade, about three point, about a million and a half dollars for, for a number of years. And then the property tax system, you see that, that is in the early stages right now. We would expect that to take a couple of years to actually implement. And then by the time it would start paying debt service on it, would be in the, we, we estimate at this time, in the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen timeframe. So that's where we've rolled that into, into that schedule. So we, we have a, a number, on a lot, a lot of these projects, we have a number of years of buildup time, especially on IT projects. And of course, when you're building a, a significant building, it takes a couple of years to go through that process of, of construct, of design and then actual construction. So the debt service wouldn't start really until you get the, the project completed. So the property tax system is, is scheduled out there in two thousand twelve, thirteen at this point. Could push out another year, could, could be sooner. I doubt it would be sooner at this point in time. Moore Park Medical is out there at a half a million dollars a year, starting in two thousand eleven and twelve. And then, of course, the JJC Office is, is another one we, we don't anticipate, you know, being actually, coming back to your board probably for another year to a year and a half, even trying to get that thing approved. A lot depends on the economy, a lot depends on construction costs and, and also internal needs for, for that space and affordability. So once we think, if that becomes more affordable, then we would construct it, and we wouldn't expect to start debt service payment on that until two thousand thirteen, fourteen timeframe. So that's basically how we take our shortlist, so to speak, that we refer to on our Schedule C, and try to fold it into a long-term plan relative to what's affordable. And if you look at the bottom, regard, even through all that affordability, the total net debt service is still, would still go up over the, over the years. But a lot of that has to do with some significant projects that really don't have any revenue, they don't have specific revenue offset. However, we expect some of these to save us other, other money as far as lease expenses and those types of things, and those aren't identifiable yet. What we would do is, as the project came closer, we would come up with a proposal and a plan that says, hey, here's, here is the project. It's a, a three million dollar debt service on the JJC Office, but it's going to save us a million and a half dollars a year in rent expense throughout the county. So we think it's a much more affordable project at this time, or, you know, something to that effect. But if it was a three point one two five million with no revenue offset or no savings on the, on the lease side, we probably wouldn't go forward with that program. So those are the kind of things we're looking at also. But as, in the long run, we, we think that this is a reasonable plan, not, not overly aggressive as far as the building, building projects and that type of thing, but it's, it's our plan that we have developed so far. And that doesn't include a number of items that are still outstanding. That plan, that, for that five-year or eight-year plan, does not include these significant items in, as far as the general fund, the FMS, financial management system upgrade, Todd Road Jail Medical Facility, East County Admin Building. These are on our longer term, you know, we've got to keep them in, in mind for the long-term. But, and then the non-general fund, airports, harbor, and fire district, since they are so separate, I mean, they really are separate entities, they really take care of their own fiscal, fiscal needs, that doesn't mean they wouldn't be included in a debt issuance, but they would definitely, those would all be revenue offset at that point in time. So they're not, they wouldn't have a, a significant impact on our overall debt service burden on the general fund. So that's, that's what we're looking at as far as debt, debt service, and that's generally the process that we go through trying to project a, a long-term, a long-term plan.
Questions? Supervisor Bennett?
Quite a few questions. Number one, looking at this, it looks like the, the one thing that you're proposing to come on to debt service is the land use system for twenty-ten, eleven, is that clear?
Yes.
All right, and then in twenty-eleven and twelve, you look, you look like you're proposing that the land use system still has some cost, and then the Volpe?
Voice, voice over internet protocol, yeah, the telephone, countywide telephone system.
So that'll be a significant one, one point three million for a number of years?
Right.
I don't know how many years that goes out.
I think it's, I think it's seven or ten. I can't remember. I think it might be ten.
Six hundred thousand for the Ventura County BCHR.
That's a human resources payroll program.
All right, that's a payroll program. Then the work furlough upgrade, the property tax system, you know, that stuff will be coming in twenty-twelve, thirteen. A couple of things. One, the board, I believe in January, but we passed a motion saying we wanted to be more involved in the establishment of sort of the debt service decisions, policies, et cetera, as well as sort of a reserve policy, et cetera. So I appreciate this coming back. It will be more helpful, I, I view this as sort of the first presentation. It'd be helpful to have this in advance so that I could prepare more questions or have it come, you know, or else I, I see it, I see other possibilities for it to come back. One of the things that I think we really need is, and I, I, we, at least we made some reference to it, so I think I'll try to be more clear now. Somebody's making a decision that the property tax system upgrade is either more important or more ready, or for some reason should be prioritized in front of the financial management system. I don't have a bias either way, but I also want to know more about why we're saying this is targeted for twenty-twelve, thirteen, and that's not targeted yet at all. What is it, you know, when we were talking about the Acela system, we, 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 at least I was trying to ask for why, you know, why, you know, and you guys had said, some systems aren't ready yet, you know? Okay, I, I'd like to have that. I'd like to have more information about the system so that the board can play an appropriate role in terms of reviewing also and saying, yeah, that makes sense to us, et cetera. So when it comes to this debt service and, and the ranking of these, these capital projects, I'd like to have more information. I'd like to have another crack at that. I see Peter shaking his head, I'd like to have another crack at that before we get to the end of the budget in June. And I realize this is sort of new territory for us, and so my request is, is, we're trying to shape what it is that we're looking for here as we have these conversations.
Right, and that's part of the process we do administratively. For example, on that, why the property tax system before the financial management upgrade, and there's a number of factors involved in that. We've, we've identified internally, talking to the auditor controller, talking to the assessor, you know, those, those types of things that we do at a staff level, that, that we're trying to take the nitty-gritty away from your board in that regard and, and do it from a staff level. Because, for example, the financial management system upgrade, the auditor controller has, has one, one person that's expert at both. There's no way they can have that person doing both at the same time. The, from a priority standpoint, from a countywide priority standpoint, the property tax system is in much, is in less good shape, let's say, than the financial management system. So we, we take, we've evaluated all that, and that's how we develop our ranking. And we can, we can come back with that information if that's kind of detail you guys want.
That's what I asked for. I mean, it, it, you know, you have evaluated it, and you said you were trying to take that nitty-gritty away from the board, and I think, I think the motion that we made was the board wants to be more involved. We don't want to just have this, it's budget time, it's time for us to adopt this and go.
Definitely.
So we'd like to have, I know I'd like to have more. I'll make the motion, I have a sense that's where the board is too, if we need to, to make that clear, if it's not clear.
We'll, we'll schedule some, I mean, this was the start of saying, okay, look, this is how we, this is what we're currently projecting. Some of these projects you haven't necessarily agreed to yet. I mean, so in terms of capital project planning, they still have to come back to the board. What we'll do is be sure that we do that earlier in the process so that we have some discussion about what those capital projects are, rather than, you know, in advance. You know, we're talking about having some of the department heads come and talk in May, and we'll do a similar sort of thing in terms of capital projects.
And so I guess just to add to what you said, some of these capital projects we haven't approved, and I'd like to be both, make sure that we're clearly involved in the approval, but also in the ranking of these projects as they go forward, and sort of the thought through, how much debt service are we going to use? How much debt service do we need to use this year? That's a whole nother policy question. You know, we're trying to keep our debt service relatively steady, but we have some, some dips in it, you know? What's, what's going to be our level of debt service this year, next year? I'd like to make sure the board is clearly involved in thinking that through as we're making our budget decisions.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll come back with the next step of this.
Thank you.
I could ask, also, with that, and not getting down into the nitty-gritty, that's your job to do that stuff, so. But it would be great if, I also look at this, like even resource payroll system, just a paragraph, what you're doing, what you're accomplishing, why? So we, before we come into these kind of meetings, we understand what, what you're doing. It's like I look at the JCC Office Building, thirty million dollars. What are we accomplishing? What do we do? What are the alternatives if we don't do? Because you have this cost versus benefit, I think would be great. And then what you rank, because you're talking just out of the general fund, about ninety-five million dollars worth of dollars, you're, you're projecting into this next budget, right? And so to spend ninety-five million dollars, what would be the reason why we would do that? Those are the kind of things that would be great. If we could read it even before we got to this.
Right, and a lot of these are, are a long-term plan as far as, you know, folding in the, these projects. Whether or not these projects come true and, and how they move up in priority and, and ranking depends a lot on cost analysis and, and cost benefit, those types of things.
Sure. I mean, the idea, when you look at this internet protocol telephone system for twelve million dollars, what are we getting versus what do we have? What does it save us? What, what improvements are we going to get? That's how I would like to look at some of that.
More information.
Yeah, just more information. But you guys are the ones who really do it. I'd just like, I'd take it, just a thirty thousand foot overview of what you're trying to accomplish.
Well, we also, I mean, some of these you, you have already received descriptions on because they have been on, on, on capital project rules for, for some time.
For years, yeah.
Our goal today was just to, to show you how we try to deal with the projections relative. These can change, and they change for a variety of reasons, but it is no problem for us to come back in a session, talk about the capital project needs, talk about how that relates to our debt service, and, and, and seek advice from the board about what you want to prioritize to. So that's not a problem.
And the other side, as Supervisor Parks and I were talking a little bit, it seems that money doesn't roll down or up to East County very far, does it, fast?
We're working on that East County Administration Building.
Oh, I like that. That's sixty million, I have a feeling that's way down the line.
Supervisor Eric Olson?
You want to think that I think is important, Paul, is, is the fact that here we, we're showing the projects and the cost, and the debt service is so important to keep our, that percentage down, to keep our, our bond rating to, to a high level in this. And you're showing how we're going to pay for that, and that's extremely important.
Right, and I think that's a key issue also, is that, you could load it all on, but you'd have to cut other programs in order to afford the debt service going forward.
How are we going to pay for it?
Yeah, exactly. We're trying to, to do this in a reasonable manner where, try to afford everything we can possibly afford within, within a reasonable amount of debt service.
And what I'd like is, because you have it for the projected budgets also, you know, for the, up to twenty-fourteen and fifteen, which is, it gives us a, a picture of how we can pay for those projects.
And we can, what we'll do is we'll send you out a, a, a copy of last year's Schedule C attachment to the board letter and a preliminary version of what we expect to be as far as this year. You can take a look at it and see, and that definitely is, it's like a paragraph for the, for each project, it's probably sixty thousand foot level, but it, it gives you some idea. And then we can provide additional details as we go along.
And I know you're looking at this stuff on a regular basis, and we don't always look at it on a regular basis, so I forget some of the stuff that you'd sent me and stuff. So appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
And we will schedule this for, for the discussion with the board. Okay? Anything else? Good.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, pardon me? Okay, motion received and filed. Motion second to do just that, and please vote. All right. And thank you, that passage knows. Thank you, members of the audience, for your patience. And we'll move ahead to our, our next item, which is item nineteen, and Supervisor Bennett's going to introduce this Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you very much. I see certainly some of my favorite people in the room and the children of Ventura County's favorite people in the room here today. We have two people that are going to be up at the diocese here with us to help us with a tragic, that we have to do this, but very important month for us to declare, and that's Child Abuse Prevention Month. And the presenters from the Ventura County Human Services Agency, Renell Williams, and from the Partnership for Safe Families and Communities, Elaine Martinez Curry. And so thank you both for being here. I know that there are others that are in the audience that I think will be coming up but won't be speaking, Saletta Dubrowski, the co-chair of the Partnership for Child Abuse and Neglect, Leah Davis, co-chair for the Partnership for Child Abuse and Neglect, and Janay Fatafoya, I hope I pronounced that right, Partnership Mandated Reported Training Specialist and Support Staff. So why don't the three of you come on up, at least to the front row here, for us to recognize you? And I know Renell has some comments to make and Elaine has some comments to make, so I'm not going to read the whole resolution, but I am going to say a few things. And that is, we talk oftentimes here in the board about trying to make good investments of our dollars. And if there was any place where we can be penny wise and pound foolish, it is to needlessly allow child abuse to take place and then perpetuate the next cycle of child abuse. Because over and over again, now, all of the studies show, it is those that are abused that are the most likely to become abusers when they become empowered and powerful adults in some other children's lives. I also see the district attorney sitting back there, and I know that he takes this very seriously, but if we can't take protecting young children who are defenseless and who have an incredibly complicated emotional bond to their abuser, if we can't take that serious and we can't do everything we can to help those children, we're really failing at our jobs here, working in county government, because it has to be our highest mission is to keep the kids that are that early in life from, from heading down the wrong road. So I won't read any of this except to say that in, every minute in California, there's a reported abuse. There were six hundred and thirty children who had a substantiated child abuse or neglect incident in Ventura County last year. Six hundred and thirty children just in Ventura County last year. So thank you very much for coming down here today. I'm going to come down and give you the resolution and give you the opportunity to try to inspire us to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairwoman Long and members of the board. As Supervisor Bennett stated, I am here on behalf of the Human Services Agency, Children and Family Services, to express our appreciation for the collaboration and ongoing partnership with the Child Abuse Prevention Council. Moving forward, of course, we look forward to continuing this positive relationship and working together as we ensure the safety. and working together as we ensure the safety and well-being of the children of Ventura County.
Thank you. Good morning, Honorable Chairman Long and the board members. I would like to thank you for your ongoing support and commitment in commemorating April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. I would also like to thank the Human Services Agency for their support and their collaboration, and the support of our many other county and community organizations that do the work in child abuse prevention. Many of them are here today supporting us as well. Today, we join with Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties in a regional effort to bring awareness to the daily commitment of keeping our children safe and working together to protect them and nurture them. I would like to give a few highlights of some of the work that the Child Abuse Prevention Council has been a part of for the last, over the last year. We presented a, a workshop on protecting your children from internet predators. We had over a hundred and fifty parents attend, where they learned how to protect their children from online predators, as well as be the gatekeeper for electronic communication devices that their children have. Additionally, we also have held two panel presentations, both in English and Spanish, at schools, churches, and community organizations, on how to talk to my kids about preventing sexual abuse. The panel consisted of community liaisons, a victim advocate, a therapist, and law enforcement, and that was presented to over a hundred and seventy parents and service providers. Additionally, we've also had a presentation on community building and a training workshop on family activism, presented by Dr. Roberto Vargas, who is a well-known facilitator, trainer, and author. That particular workshop provided the best practices for professionals, and also advocates, highlighting community-wide strategies for community wellness and family strengthening as a violence prevention tool. We had a hundred and twenty participants at that particular training, that included many of our parent leaders in our community. As part of the work that Partnership, as the Child Abuse Prevention Council does, is to provide man, free mandated reporter training for our community providers and our service providers. This year, we've held seven trainings, and with over a hundred and fifty-five participants. And we've also held an annual Train the Trainer workshop. There, we've, currently, we've trained thirty-three other representatives to go out and train on mandated child abuse and neglect reporting. And additionally, we also promote awareness and resources for child abuse and family violence prevention through our monthly newsletter and our website. And that goes out monthly to over twelve hundred constituents. But lastly, we also want to commemorate Child Abuse Prevention Month by presenting all of you with a blue ribbon that signifies, oh, I think I have it on, that signifies on Child Abuse Prevention Month. And also, one of our newsletters, you can see some of the events and information that goes out to our members and out to our constituents, and a brochure. And we'd like to thank you for your continued dedication in promoting a community dedicated to safe, healthy, and peaceful families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see the cameras rushing forward, but before the cameras rush forward, I would like to have all the people here who are here for this item in particular, let's get everybody involved in this picture, and if you would come down, we have our standard, we'll do it right on over here, we'll stack ourselves up on the tables, chairs, et cetera, and we'd like to have everybody involved in this picture. Mr. Totten, you're welcome to come down if you'd like, board members, if you'd like. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Bennett, thank you for presenting that. Next up, we have our item twenty, and this is Mr. Zaragosa.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, you know, and keeping with the, with the goodwill and the child abuse and so forth. I'd like to call Betty, Betty Ham Albedes and Nancy Williams. Betty's from City Impact, and Nancy's from Southern California Edison. And I'd like to read this commendation, or this resolution, and then they'll probably going to share some words. Whereas the City Impact is an outreach organization that deals with social concerns, that assists the success of many residents of the community, and where City Impact serves the community in many diverse areas, offering through a merit of outreach programs such as individual family and couple counseling, youth intervention, school support programs, and after-school programs, and when tutoring, and tutoring programs. City Impact has provided children and parent literacy programs, food outreach programs for families in the El Rio and Nylone Acres area. They provide food out there for those individuals, too. Whereas City Impact continues to provide this necessary services to at-risk and high-risk children, youth and families throughout Ventura County, with the gracious support and foundations of the Southern California Edison Company. And also, I'd like to share, within we have, for the Southern California Edison, the same resolution, it says, Southern California Edison is concerned with the social issues affecting the lives and inhibiting the success of many residents in the community. Whereas Southern California Edison empowers community agencies to serve the community in many diverse areas, offering through the merit of outreach programs, such as individual family and couples counseling, youth intervention, school support programs, after-school programs, tutoring programs. Whereas Southern California has, Edison has provided resources for local organizations to provide children and parent literacy programs, and food outreach programs for families in El Rio and Nylone Acres. Whereas Southern California continues to provide the necessary financial support to provide the services to at-risk and high-risk youth and families throughout Ventura County. So we'd like to share this resolution with you, and hopefully maybe say some words before I go down.
Thank you very much, Supervisors Zaragosa and members of the, the board. I am Nancy Williams, Region Manager here for Southern California Edison, and I'm extremely honored and pleased that we were able to give this donation to City Impact. I just recently took over that geographical area for our county, just late last year, and had the pleasure of meeting with Betty. And it just, all of their goals for City Impact is pretty much dovetailed into our corporate goals, and trying to outreach to that whole entire customer base. And I'm also, I was sharing this morning, we have had record numbers of our nonprofits, apply for grants through the Southern California Edison Corporate Giving Program. And as you can appreciate, they're all very, very worthy. But I am so excited that we were able to give the ten thousand dollars we can this time to City Impact. We don't get a lot of those up in this area, so I'm excited, and thank you very much.
Supervisor Zaragosa, Chairperson Kathy Long, and Supervisors, we want to thank you for this opportunity of being here today. These people that are standing behind me are the, I could say, the support system in which we're able to deliver services. Shelby Tobias is actually the director, that actually works in El Rio and the Nylone Community, that are involved in the tutoring programs, intervention programs. We're able to utilize the funds from EPSDT and Medi-Cal to come alongside and dovetail. It's actually a service in the El Rio community, and it's at a church, that opens its doors free of cost to all these county services, as well as the nonprofit services. It's because of organizations and companies like SCE that continues to support our endeavors. And we want to thank Supervisor Zaragosa for considering City Impact in this proclamation, and I thank our board of directors that support City Impact countywide with the many services that we provide. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And by the way, I think it's Thursdays that you go over to Nylone Acres to provide food for the individual children's families.
We are actually there twice a week. We're also there with Food Share and the Produce Outreach. I think the numbers are up now, combining our efforts with Mercy Ministries, and the totals are now at about three hundred and fifty per week, throughout the outreach and the food distribution. The numbers, unfortunately, because of the economic times, have increased, but the, the companies have come alongside, Food Share, as well as Mercy Ministries, the church, and City Impact, have decided to come together and said, that's how we can impact the community at a better rate.
And thank you, Edison, for your, I think you have a check you say you did, ten thousand dollar check, if you believe.
All right, yay!
Thank you so much.
That's great.
Can I direct you, if you had all look like this, that they?
Look around this.
Yeah.
You know, that girl is just a boss here, isn't she?
And let me give you a nomination, and let me see if I have the right conversation.
Well, that's going to feed a lot of family.
Thank you all. Board members and Edison, thank you so much. Nancy, Betty, you do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, Linda, you and I are in charge.
Okay.
Thank you, Supervisor, for bringing that forward.
Yeah, thank you. It's an honor.
Item twenty-one is a public hearing, approval of a resolution, settling lift charges, District Four. Mr. Pacala.
Good morning again, Chairlong, members of the board, and Mrs. Robinson. Ready Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. This item is a public hearing for the proposed lift charges for Ventura County Water Work District Number One. District is constructing a new booster pump station to provide higher pressures and improved fire flow to properties north of City of Moore Park and west of Happy Camp Canyon. As your board is aware, in the last seven years, we had three fire events in these areas, so it's very vulnerable for fires. The project is scheduled to be completed next month. Once the new pump station comes online, District will be responsible to pay Edison charges for the operation of this new pump station. We are recommending that the District pass through these Edison charges to the customers who will be benefiting from this new pump station. Lift charges are subject to Proposition 218 protest hearings. A notice of the proposed lift charge was mailed to all the property owners in this area. Clerk of the Board did not receive any protest letters regarding this charge. Our office in Moore Park received two telephone calls, asking questions, some clarifications about the proposed charge. The five-member advisory committee appointed by your board has unanimously supported this recommendation to your board, and we are recommending that your board approve the, adopt the resolution in our staff report. That concludes my verbal presentation. I'll be glad to take any questions you might have.
Are there any questions at this time? It is a public hearing that I will open for the public hearing. Any questions, staff? Yes.
It looks like it's eighty-seven dollars, a little over eighty-seven dollars per acre foot. Is that what I'm reading?
Yes, sir. That's, that's estimated twenty cents per hundred cubic feet of water everybody buys. It's based on the water consumption.
But is it only for a certain group of people?
It's only for those customers who will be receiving water supply from this new pump station.
And that's a small group?
Yes.
Because of their elevation issue? Is that what it is?
Yes. These property owners have their own pumps, but one of the difficulty we had over the years is not sufficient fire flow. With this new pump station we have, we will be able to provide one thousand gallons per minute of fire flow in this area. And in addition to that, the property owners will be able to abandon their pumps they have now, and instead of paying the Edison company themselves, they'll be paying to the District.
This is a pretty minimal amount of money, is what I see is, you have fourteen hundred dollars, but it's more than that, isn't it? Because you have, like, twelve thousand acre feet at eighty-seven dollars an acre foot?
Yeah, but we are talking about small volume of water that goes through this pump station. This fourteen hundred dollars is based on, based on twenty cents per hundred cubic feet. We looked at the last year's consumption for this customer, that's how, we came up with that fourteen hundred dollars.
Fourteen hundred dollars?
That's correct. That's fourteen hundred dollars for yearly, if we look at financial FY ten eleven, fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
That's the annual estimated cost that will be passed on to these customers.
It, it seems pretty minimal to me. I don't know why you couldn't absorb that, just in your current budget.
Well, as, as you, as you're aware, I mean, our costs keep going up. Your board has adopted similar lift charges in Water Work District Nineteen. Those areas where a, a small group of people benefit from a lift station, they pay the lift charges. When you have a pump station that benefits entire District, that's absorbed by all the customers in the District. Since this only benefits a small group of people, and the District has invested money in constructing this lift station, we are recommending to pass this on to the customers.
Do I have any public, any cards submitted for public comment? I don't see here, I don't have any. Okay, then, this is before the board. Okay, is there a motion? There's a motion for approval, is there a second? If we do nothing, what occurs?
Well, it'll, it has to be paid for by the District. Other customers who are not benefiting the service, this benefit will be pay, paying this cost.
So the District Citizens Advisory Committee unanimously concurred with this recommended action, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
On March twenty, on March ninth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, and this is again, a, a pass-through that has been in place in other districts throughout the, throughout.
Yes, sir.
That we have authority on.
And Madam Chair, normally, that's the, the case, right? Is a pass-through fee, actually, that, to keep that, that District solvent.
Yes, sir.
And as part of the, I know it's fourteen hundred dollars, but, you know, like, fourteen here and fifteen there, and...
If this, if this does not get a second for action, and, and then it defaults to the rest of the District picking it up, what's the calculation on what the cost will be to the rest of the property owners to take care of this need for this small group of folks who need the lift station? Do you have you?
We are talking about passing through the cost just for the Edison power charges.
Right.
So it's a minimal compared to overall cost of Edison power charges we pay. However, from a policy perspective, your board has previously instituted these lift charges where a certain number of customers benefit from these facilities. So we are trying, we are recommending a consistent policy of your board in the past.
Really? If we hadn't built the lift station, what'd be the situation for these homeowners that have?
Well, these homeowners have individual pumps right now, that they're already paying for these Edison charges.
And does that give them the?
And if we do not, I mean, the lift station has been, in our capital project program, it has been approved by your board, we are constructing it, it's going to be completed next month. If it was not there, they're subject to, there's insufficient fire flow in this area.
Right. So it is a minimal additional charge for them to receive adequate fire flow.
Adequate fire flow, and higher pressures.
And there's been no protest received.
Yes.
So, the community is, I mean, they're getting the benefit of this investment, and they're being asked to just simply pay for the electricity charges associated with it.
Yes, ma'am.
I know from my, I sit on the Tranquil Sanitation District, and Bill Canyon has lift stations, and I, I know that...
It was...I'm not sure that we...I just think this could have been easily absorbed. My biggest thing is not the fourteen hundred dollars. It's the idea of opening up a new opportunity to raise rates through a lift charge that will come back next year and have greater lift charges the next year and next year. It's, you know, it's another tax opportunity, and I just don't like it. I think we need to find...we've been hitting these people every year, as you know, 20%, 17%, 14%, and it's just getting astronomical. And some of these people have already put in their own pumps and done their own expense to give pressure at their houses, right? Because like you said, all these people have some of their own things that they pay Edison for now.
They're paying now. Once this comes online, they will not be paying those...
No, I understand, but they've already invested to have these pumps. So the idea of I invested how many hundreds or thousands of dollars to have some pressurized to increase my pressure now, that's not worth anything to me. I guess I just look at it as a...there's certain things at some point, we just can't always ask everybody to pay, you know? We already have this covered as the overhead, so I just don't have any desire to increase their costs at eighty-seven dollars an acre foot, which is a big number. How much we have, a thousand dollars an acre foot now in this district?
Still, one is about nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Nine hundred and fifty, so now we're going to be almost, you know...
Well, for those customers, yes. But it also depends on how much water they use. It's not based on acre foot. If a given customer uses a minimal amount, they'll be only paying based on the water they use for these lift charges.
Right, I understand. I'm just trying to use as a measurement that we can...
Madam Chair, if I may, this project actually was supported by the property owners in that area. They have come to the District several times and told that they're very concerned about the fire protection. When we initiated this project, they were told that if this gets through, if you're constructing the project, we'll be recommending pass-through of these lift charges. And all of the property owners were aware of this.
Well, how about if we do this? How about if we do this? Can we pull this for right now?
Sure.
And you can give us a list of those property owners?
Yes, sir.
Our office can contact them and see if they have that issue, so that if...if they want to pay for that, and they believe that's a better benefit to them, I have no problem with that.
Yes, sir. We have to do that.
Okay.
We'd like to continue that.
So I'm going to make a motion to pull this and continue, and let's...and I know there's somebody back there raising their hand. Yeah, let me...
Yeah, we have two property owners here who are in this area.
Well, first of all, we have a motion on the floor.
Then I'll...
Draw your motion.
I'll draw your motion.
Yes.
And before I make mine, if there is a property owners here that we can listen to that, I wouldn't...
You need to come up to the front, please, and just give us your name and welcome. Your comments.
How are you? My name is David Spencer, and I kind of the pain in the ass to the Water District on this project. We have met several times with the Water District, and we are aware of the lift charges. The concern I have about them is not paying them. We are paying them now, and that's a fact. But there are other pump stations in the District that do not pay lift charges, and I don't quite understand the distinction. We're very grateful for this pump station. We're very grateful for Supervisor Floyd's help in getting this moved forward. We've been doing this for several years, and it is now coming to light, and that's great for us because we didn't have water...well, through the first fire, we didn't have water for three days. It was a crisis situation in the county. We understand that. We're at the top of the elevation, and the resources were used in many places. The county's minimum requirement for pressure to our meter is 40 pounds. I have eight at my meter, if the tank is full. It's not most of the time. They're doing the best they can. We're in a bad economy. We understand this. I am asking from you, I guess fairness. You've helped us now by putting in a station where we will have fire protection. We don't have it at present. We don't mind paying the lift charges. I would say I speak for all of the residents up there because we're paying them now, as long as it's fair to everybody that has a pump station and benefits from it, that they pay the same cost. I'm sure part of my water rates pay for the other District's improvements and whatever else happens. I believe the District is responsible for providing their rules to us. We have only asked for what the minimum requirements are, and now that's coming to pass, and I'm grateful for that, to all of you, I'm grateful to the Water District. I wish it would have happened sooner, but, you know, this is where we're at now.
Okay, so at the end, as you and your community, you have no problem with that. What you're really saying is, we don't want to be the only one in the District paying lift charges.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Let me ask Ready Pacala if he can answer that question for us.
Thank you for coming up.
charges or what?
The way the lift charges are looked at, if a given booster pump station were to pump the water to a reservoir, for example, then that water can flow toward the District to benefit entire District customers. For example, in a given water district, we have different pressure zones, and you have tanks. If this pump station is pumping this, that can go to this zone, different zones. Those pump stations, we distribute the cost to everybody. But in this particular case, this particular pump station only benefits a given number of customers in this area. It does not benefit entire District service area. The water cannot go into the other...the higher pressure water cannot go into other zones. That's the reason we are recommending this lift charge. And yes, this is the first lift charge for Ventura County Waterworks District Number One. However, when I mentioned earlier about the board policy in District 19, we had this lift charge for a long, long time. That has been the policy of your board.
Then, sure, then, so they do pay...everybody pays for lift stations regardless of...but in this specific case, there's a few individuals that have to pump to a certain specific...but if you're servicing the whole area, they're paying for that lift cost anyway in their rates. Is that correct?
If you are pumping into a zone where that water can move toward the District, then everybody shares the cost. If you are pumping into what I call a closed system, that's only that...those property owners are benefiting from this higher pressure, especially the fire flow.
And it's a fire issue, right?
Yeah, fire issue is a bigger issue. They are benefiting from the fire protection and also higher pressures. And as I mentioned earlier, these property owners have their own pumps. Supervisor Floyd's comment was that they already invested the money, but they have them for the last 20 years or longer time. I think they understood that these pumps will be going away, and it's a benefit for them. They don't have to worry about operation maintenance of their pumps, and most of them may have served their lives already for the pumps.
Okay, so it sounds like what was said, I think Supervisor Zaragoza was...is everybody's paying it, and but these neighbors are already still paying for those other lift pumps on top of it, right? Plus, they're going to pay for this one. But what you're saying is only because this one affects them directly?
This only can...
And the rest of them affect the whole system directly?
Exactly.
Is that the way to say it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. So I guess back to his question was that, in a sense, it is fair, I guess, that the lifts that you're paying for and everybody else paying for is because it's affecting the whole system, and it helps his system. It brings water to his system that you do pump. Is that...that he already is paying for in the other lifts? Does that make sense? What I'm saying, even though it's a closed system you're talking about, but the other lifts in the other areas that everybody's paying for, is that helping pump water to his...
This system, yes.
To his system so you can pump it up to...
Yes, sir.
All right, so he is getting a benefit for what he's paying for.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right. And if the community, some of the people here, because I know that when people do come, they're representing some of that, but I have no problem in seeing his comments, and it sounds like then if everybody has been on board with this, that that's fine. I do want to make sure we understand that the idea that other people still are paying. He's paying also, and his neighbors are paying...
Yes, sir.
Both lifts in all the different districts. Okay, then if they're on board, I will go along with this, and I'll make the motion too, or I'll just second the motion that we...I don't know if we withdrew the motion.
He withdrew the other one.
It still shows on the...
I withdrew, I can...
Well, it just shows on the screen for me. I don't know if it has been withdrawn. What do you want to do, Roberta?
Okay, then.
All right, then I'll make a motion to do that, if we can get a second then.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Approve the recommended action.
Let me take three of those.
I'll vote.
All right.
Right.
Yep. You're right on time. You can vote for water rate increase. Thank you for...you guys for coming out here. I appreciate that.
Appreciate it. That passes. Four votes positive and one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, board.
Those are always challenging ones. Okay, well, is everyone here for the 11:30? Shall we do that first before we go into the CSAC and the other ones? That's okay? Great. Sure.
It is one of the great pleasures... It's one of the great pleasures of being on the Board of Supervisors that when you have a long time, county employees retire, that you get to have a resolution that summarizes 36 years' worth of work here for the county, and that's a remarkable body of work, and it's very gratifying for me and satisfying to sort of be the chronicler of that. And so Denise, would you please come on up to the podium? And for those of you in the audience, I take great pleasure in sort of giving this background of Denise and then turning it over for some sage pieces of advice from both Dan and from Denise. But this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors honoring Denise Bodine for 36 years of dedicated service to Ventura County. Whereas Denise received her Bachelor's of Arts degree in English from Weber State College in Ogden, Utah. Denise began her career with the County of Ventura in 1973, right when I was getting out of college, myself, in the Auditor's Office as Account Clerk One, and then promoted to Senior Secretary and worked in that position in the Auditor's Office, the County Executive Office, and the Library Services. And whereas Denise subsequently joined the Assessor's Office in June of 1981 as an Appraiser Trainee and worked up through the ranks, being promoted four times to her final position as Supervising Appraiser. And Denise worked in both the track and custom residential crews, as well as on the commercial and industrial crews through several periods of growth and decline in market value. And Denise gained such a depth of knowledge and experience coordinating and administrating work on calamity claims from the January 17, 1994 North Ridge earthquake, that she earned the title of Calamity Queen. And Denise has always taken keen professional pride in her own work, spending extra time to be sure that her work was consistently accurate and complete. Denise has earned the respect of the many appraisers who have been trained and shaped by her instruction, and Denise has demonstrated an ability to work well under pressure while still maintaining an enthusiastic demeanor, both with her coworkers and the public alike. Denise has provided the taxpayers of Ventura County with superior public service by following through to completion any assessment issues that have come to her attention. Denise has greatly contributed to making the workplace...and this is really a nice compliment, I think, as an assessor in the Assessor's Office. Denise has greatly contributed to making the workplace a fun place to be while accomplishing serious work. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring Denise Bodine for 36 years of dedicated service to the Ventura County's Assessor's Office. Presented this the 13th day of April 2010.
Well, I just appreciate the career that I've had working in four different county departments, and it's kind of soon to quit, I guess, but my husband decided to retire too, so we retired on the same day. So we're having a lot of fun, and we're glad we did. So...but I highly recommend, you know, working for the county is a great opportunity, and serving the taxpayers, I think, unless you've been a government employee, you don't really realize how worthwhile that is, and I really appreciate that opportunity for 36 years. So thanks to all of you. Thank you.
I'd like to just share a little bit for the board. You know, Denise is a great example of a person who brings many, many things to an organization she works for, and of course, so many people do, but Denise, she has a personality, first of all, that brings the fun, and a dedication and work ethic that certainly accomplished all of her duties in a way that we...that everybody would respect. In my position, I respected it because she set such a good example for those she trained, for those who look to her as an example. And frequently, I might leave my desk, you know, I think her schedule generally was...her quitting time was 5:30, and frequently, I'd be leaving my office about 6:00 and kind of walk through the building a little bit and go by her area, and she'd be there, and I'd go, well, how you doing? You know, it's kind of, you know, I appreciate what you're doing, but you know, I want you to get some rest, too. She's a very dedicated person. She really brought a lot to the office. She's greatly missed. Many of those who respect her and appreciate her so much are here attending this ceremony as well. And so, anyway, thank you so much, Denise. She did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Supervisor. Okay, next, we're going to move to our time-certain item 23, and it's a letter that's being brought forward jointly by Supervisor Bennett and myself, and it is to recommend that we send a letter to the state subcommittees in support of the restoration of child welfare funding. And as you see the letter, certainly you can read it, and the proposed letter to be sent to the Chair of the Subcommittee Number One, Jerry Hill of the Assembly Budget Committee, and Mark Leno of the Senate Budget and Finance Committee. And it is to ask for the restoration of the cut to the child services...child welfare services that the governor took, and the issue for, I think should be for all of us, is that although we are in a deep recession, our...the government's top jobs should certainly be to make sure that the children who are our future and their ability to prosper requires us to take care of the abused and neglected children and not turn a blind eye to them, that we should really work hard to make sure that the chances that are provided to them to become productive members of our community are there in order to rebuild our state and to look at it as an investment in protecting our children. It should not be an option. It should not be the first thing that is cut, which are draconian cuts that the governor took. Children depend on us, and we must believe in their futures and protect them in every way we can. The veto by the governor wasn't just another cut to another program. He compromised the child welfare system's ability to do its work. He turned his back on the very children he has promised to protect. Children die due to abuse and neglect. Public outrage has been high, and it's on the front page, and people want to know what...why did this...how did this happen? Well, at this point, with these cuts, and they are draconian, that he's already taken, and we're asking to...for the legislative leadership to get a hold of their leadership and turn this around and to fund these programs and to protect these children. And I know there are folks out there saying, well, then, you know, what should he cut? Well, I have to offer to you, just as we do. We set priorities, and we find other...we find ways to make sure that we bring our budget in on time and balanced, and there has to be, there absolutely has to be, other ways to make these cuts instead of putting children as the first to be cut at the top of the list. They should be certainly at the very bottom of the list for cuts. There is a strong list of child welfare funding supporters who are advocating this, similar letters across every board agenda in the 58 counties in this state, in addition to lots of other partnerships and alliances who have joined us, Urban County Caucus... and turn this around and to fund these programs and to protect these children. And, and I know there are folks out there saying, "Well, then, you know, what should he cut?" Well, I have to offer to you just as we do. We set priorities and we find other, we find ways to make sure that we bring our budget in, on time and balanced. And there has to be, there absolutely has to be other ways to make these cuts instead of putting children as the first to be cut at the top of the list. They should be certainly at the very bottom of the list for cuts. There is a strong list of child welfare fund, funding supporters who are advocating this, similar letters across every board agenda in the, in the 58 counties in this state, in addition to lots of other partnerships and alliances who have joined us. Urban County Caucus, CSAC, National Association of Social Workers. The list is lengthy. 27 public agencies and officials, 22 associations, coalitions, national organizations, 83 nonprofit organizations. They are vulnerable and they, they certainly should, should not be the first to be cut. And that's my introductory comment. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. I just would only add two things. What makes this not common sense is the cut leaves then $40 million of federal money, matching money on the table. And just as we saw last week, we're trying to leverage and we're trying to get that matching money. So, so a cut that leaves $40 million in federal money on the table is, is an example, particularly when it is for children and protecting children from abuse and neglect, should be the last thing that we do. The second thing is, when you live in the only state in the coun, in the country that does not have an oil severance tax, and you sit there and you say, "What kind of priorities do we have?" We're the only state that is not willing to touch that because of the, of the power of the petroleum lobby. A small, small oil severance tax would easily raise the funds that would be needed to be able to access this matching money from the federal government. I know we don't want to make a habit of with every budget cut, we're going to sit there and take this. I think Supervisor Long is right. This is the one that has risen to the level that is so extreme that we have to say something and raise our voice in opposition. Thank you.
Well, we know that just here in Ventura County, it will impact not 16 child welfare social workers. And someone, "Oh, it's only 16." Well, those 16 child welfare social workers carry heavy caseloads, really working hard to protect the vulnerable children. And, and we know that it would have a negative impact on 793 of our children. And as I said, when you, if you can, if you can read that front page when that first child shows up there because of abuse and neglect and because there wasn't a response to the hotline, which receives over 8,000 calls last fiscal year alone, if you can look at that child's picture and think that's okay, then we're all in the wrong business. So I certainly would support that we move forward with this letter and we send it forward to the leadership in the subcommittees. And that's my motion.
I'd be happy to second it.
I just want to thank you for bringing this forward and taking the leadership on this. And Supervisor Bennett mentioned one potential revenue source, but you also look at, you know, some of the irresponsible funds that they have been using to give bonuses and things like that. There's a lot of, I think, ways that can be taken care of there and put in the right place.
I'm not, I appreciate where we're going with this. Anything else? I just think what we do is we have a problem in this state where we try to micromanage with the Governor and everybody's trying to do, and I think it's a problem for that. I mean, I agree, there's no question, we've got to do whatever we can to help these kids, but we can't be dealing bit by bit and piece by piece in this situation, so that I can't support what we're doing. I understand where you're coming from and I appreciate that, but I just can't support the idea that we've got to give the Governor and his office the ability to do something to fix his budget.
Well, yes, go ahead.
You know, I think we either pay now or pay later because if not, it'll come back to us, you know, through the ER system, through our medical system, so we'll end up paying for it regardless.
Very true. Okay, the vote's taken place and we'll send it forward and I appreciate the Board's support. Thank you. Okay, now, item 24. My pleasure to invite up to the diocesan Kiana Bus, who is with CSAC, and she's going to give us a report on the State Association of Counties. And as the Board knows, I, I've been point person on much of the CSAC work that is underway. We're all fully engaged in, in policy committees at one level or another, but CSAC is going around to all of the counties to provide a good overview, both for our, for the public to be aware of, the good work that they do and we do with them. And it's great to have Kiana here this morning. Thank you, Kiana.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairperson Long, Supervisors and Staff. I'm very excited to be before you today for a couple of reasons too. I appreciate the opportunity to provide this update on what's going on in Sacramento, or maybe a lack of what's going on in Sacramento at the moment, and within our organization, but also as a self-proclaimed government geek. This is my first county, County Board of Supervisors meeting I've attended, so I appreciate this and Mark, this as--
It's all downhill from here. None of the rest is good.
I come from Sacramento though, so I don't know. Again, my name is Kiana Bus. I'm a Legislative Analyst with the California State Association of Counties. I work personally on housing, land use, transportation, climate change, and Native American affairs. But that is just a small portion of what CSAC does and tries to provide for UR members. As Chairperson Long alluded to, we are here going before all 58 county boards of supervisors to talk a little bit about what we do and what's going on in Sacramento, as well as the improvements we continue to try to make so that we provide value to you as members of our association. It is obviously no secret that these are unprecedented times. We continue to struggle with this budget crisis. The previous item suggests just that. And within the Legislature, we've finished a historic eighth extraordinary budget session to try to address the situation, yet we are still facing an almost $20 billion deficit in the next fiscal year. So we recognize that county government is being hit the hardest by the current budget crisis. So with that, I will begin a little bit about what happened in the eighth extraordinary session. I was told not to press the middle button, and I'm pretty sure that's what I'm going to do. So it was called, the eighth extraordinary session was called in January 2008 and it just concluded last month. It was convened to address about a $6.6 billion current year budget deficit among the larger $20 billion problem. We provide weekly budget, or as-needed budget action bulletins to our membership to try to keep them apprised of what's going on. All of this information can be found on our website. Some of the highlights of what was happened in the last few months, the Legislature sent a package of bills to the Governor estimated to save approximately $4 billion in the current year. He vetoed one of those bills, which contained $2.2 billion in savings. He signed another, which would include a plan of deferrals in the next fiscal year related to highway user tax account funds, social service payments, and Prop 63. And finally, he signed a somewhat complicated gas tax swap, where we kind of traded Prop 42 for an increase in excise tax, did something slightly different on the transit side, somehow ended up revenue neutral with about $1 billion in cost savings to the general fund. But under that swap, county transportation funds remain revenue neutral and we will continue to receive that funding in the future. So while we have been dealing with over two years of constant budgeting, we have also still been trying to keep up with legislation. So CSAC, oh, I'm behind in my PowerPoints already. CSAC analyzes more than 1,000 measures introduced every year. The deadline this year was February 19th and we pored over those for a number of months. We are beginning to testify before weekly policy committee hearings on positions that we take as we vet issues through our CSAC policy committee process. So if we don't have a standing policy on an issue, we go before one of our many policy committees, talk with you folks about that developed policy, and then advocate on counties' behalfs before the Legislature. Every Friday, or pretty much almost every Friday, we email out a legislative bulletin highlighting the activities of the week. All this talk about legislative, legislative affairs leads to the conference, our annual legislative conference in Sacramento on June 2nd and 3rd. And recognizing travel budgets are really tight, we are trying to work very hard to produce a program for you that adds value and you can justify in your budget so that you are able to attend. We will have all five policy committee meetings, workshops on a multitude of different issues, effective labor negotiations, local initiative process, strategies to secure federal funding, to name a few. We're working on securing keynote speakers and lunchtime sessions. And it also provides you an opportunity to meet with your legislative delegation and talk with them about the issues facing you here at home. CSAC's, one of CSAC's main efforts, at least in the last few years since I've been on Board, is really improving our communication with you folks so that you know what we're doing. And this is obviously one aspect of that coming to visit you here at home. We've joined a number of different media outlets, including Facebook and Twitter. So if you have a Facebook page and you're not friends with CSAC, we hope you'll come be a fan of ours. We've also recently released The County Voice, which is our new blog. And hopefully you, that has crossed your desk or you've had a chance to look at that. And if not, I encourage you to visit that. A little bit more editorial comment from the staff on what we think is going on, and it's just a different perspective on maybe the more technical stuff we provide in our budget action bulletins or legislative bulletins. We're also working to streamline the communications. You get emails from us and from Paul, the Executive Director of the Association, and policy committees and all different avenues. So we're trying to combine all of those things into a new one-stop-shop e-publication. So that should be coming soon to your inbox. And then finally, again, Paul McIntosh, Executive Director of CSAC, continues to do his Executive Director's Watches, which provide timely information as needed to get to you on a whole host of different issues. Let's see. Additionally, CSAC's Finance Corps is always looking for new ways to meet the changing needs of our county members. For instance, we issued the Prop 1A securitization last year when in the budget, the state borrowed, deferred, whatever you want to call it, tax, property tax revenues. And in the folder that I've provided you, in the back, you'll find some information on U.S. communities and various programs that Ventura County is a part of. And that Prop 1A securitization saved almost $50,000 to the county by participating in that program. I think since the life, since Ventura County's been involved in the Finance Corps, it's close to $450,000 in savings. So we feel that's a really effective service that we are able to provide you. Some additional information on other programs and services are included in that packet. So additional savings are potentially there for you. A really good benefit of the Finance Corps is also we're able, that's a very large revenue generator for us, so we're able to keep dues down and also provide services like the recently inaugurated Institute for Excellence in County Government. And so far, we're getting rave reviews. It's in its second year now. We have instructors from faculty at CSU Sacramento, USC, and various other policy experts within the political arena all over the state come to provide instruction to county supervisors and staff on a whole variety of issues. Average class sizes range 20 to 30 people, so it's a pretty intimate group and we're able to have a lot of interaction with the faculty and with one another in those courses. Most of them are typically held in Sacramento, but we are working to provide more here in Southern California and in the Bay Area. Another opportunity for CSAC to engage on issues of importance for counties nationally is at NACO, the National Association of Counties. We attended their legislative conference in Washington, D.C. in March, and it was very well-attended by Supervisors from across the state as well as CSAC staff. We lobbied on federal authorization for transportation, Native American issues, a whole host of issues that are facing counties today. And I think it was very successful to say the least, so we're excited to continue our work with NACO. And the annual meeting will be in Washoe County, or I believe Reno, this summer in July, so hopefully some folks can attend. And then finally, a plug for April, National County Month, which I believe last week you guys approved your resolutions, so--
We did.
Very good. This obviously started within NACO, but is something that CSAC is hoping to do on an annual basis and improve it as we implement it in the future, that educates the Legislature staff, the public, about what counties do and the importance of the work that counties provide for all of our constituents. So it gives you an opportunity as well to tell your county story to local media. It is taking place during the week of April 19th through the 23rd, and CSAC's got a whole host of events that we plan to do that week. Each day, we are going to highlight a different area of services that counties provide to the state, Health and Human Services, Public Works, et cetera. So we're looking forward to that. If I could say in closing, I think that CSAC staff recognizes now more than ever, it's important for us to be responsive to your needs and the challenges you're facing and to provide you valued services. So we welcome your feedback all the time, anytime. You can contact any of us at staff and hopefully we can be helpful to you. And I welcome any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, Kiana, for the presentation. Are there any questions?
Is Supervisor Long as good a representative as we think she is?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Good answers.
Absolutely.
Okay, no questions. So thank you. I appreciate both of the time and the energy and effort of coming into the county to, to present and give a good public update on the CSAC interaction with our county.
Thank you. Sincerely appreciate being here.
Look forward to seeing you at the Ledge Conference.
Okay. Thank you.
You talked about NACO is going to be in Reno in the summertime.
Yes.
And then is there a NACO Washington conference?
That was this past March, so just last month.
So is that an annual event?
That is, the annual legislative conference usually takes place in March in Washington, D.C., with their annual general conference--
Right.
--at various places across the nation in the summer months.
I see.
Supervisor Zeragosa attended.
That's what I remember hearing about that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So receiving foul action, I'll put the motion forward, do just that. Okay. And thank you, Board members, for the time on that item. Next up, we have item 25, and it's a second read. I've lost track. Second read?
That's right. This is the second read. I think we finally got this thing all the way right and--
As right as we can get right now.
Want to appreciate County Council's office for working. This law is complex because of the way the Supreme Court has so narrowly allowed any, any limits and stuff. And we wouldn't be doing this in the middle of a campaign if it wasn't for the fact that we had the Supreme Court ruling that, that I think our County Council wisely advised us, we're better off changing now rather than having a law that's, that's not actually constitutional or defensible. And so we've made the changes and they'll take a place 30 days from today, correct? So we'll have a little bit of weirdness in there. And what I would encourage people to do who are printing stuff up is to print with the, with the disclosure as it's in the newly refined ordinance, in case your piece gets out there after the 30 days and stuff would be my advice. But anyway, thank you very much, County Council, for moving forward. And I'd like to move the recommended action.
And I'll second it.
We're ready to vote.
There are no public comments on this item, so we'll take the action to vote.
She's out of the office.
That passes with three positives, one abstention. Okay. Thank you. And now, we have completed our regular agenda. We have closed session items. We may have an announcement coming out of closed session. And Board members, let's get to it. Okay, we're back out for a moment, an announcement. On Agenda Item 29, the Board of Supervisors, in accordance with County Ordinance Number 4235, has voted unanimously to concur with the County Executive Officer's appointment of Stephen P. Lipson to the Office of Public Defender. Congratulations. Did you have a speech prepared?
I thought I just gave one back there.
Okay, all right.
I'll say, I know you guys are hungry, but I will just.
Please don't, please don't.
All right, Linda.
Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. Thanks, Marty, also. I'm glad you showed me the confidence. I'm not going to let anybody down. We're going to have a, I, I think we've got a really good office right now, I'm just going to keep it going. I know there are tough financial times. I've got two things going. The first is, to you all, to make sure I spend as little as possible, and to the lawyers to make sure they got all the resources they need to do their job. It's a balancing act. It might be rocky at times, but there'll be no surprises for you guys. I'll just do the best I can. So thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Congratulations.
Go forth and do good work.
That's right. Okay, we'll go back into closed session with the rest of the agenda. Thank you. No further announcements expected.